Prior to tonight's meeting, an informational executive session was held to discuss a new school partnership and a component program of the district. The board also discussed the sale of Cleveland Elementary School and consulted with charter school council regarding legal issues surrounding the conduct of the ongoing charter school proceedings. The board welcomes and invites public comment. You may address the board on agenda and/or non-agenda items. The first opportunity for comment is at the beginning of the meeting and is limited to agenda items only. Comment cards must be received by the start of the meeting, which would be within the next minute or two, which is now. We will not be receiving public cards once the meeting begins. A copy of the public comment policy is located on the table next to the comment cards. According to our policy, any person may address the board in accordance with the procedures and limitations of this policy, either on issues presented in resolutions being considered or on other matters affecting the administration or operation of the district. Remarks of a personal nature directed against any individual will be ruled out of order. If you choose to address the board, please fill out a comment card and hand it to the board secretary. Ms. Pollak, please raise your hand. Comment cards are located at the podium near the door. Once recognized, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and kindly limit your remarks to three minutes. We will now have roll call.
Ms. Conover?
Present.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Matheson?
Here.
Ms. Noel Brown?
Here.
Ms. Ortiz?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Present.
Dr. Santana?
Here.
Ms. Wilt?
Here.
Ms. Brown? We have eight members present.
Thank you. We will now please rise for the pledge of allegiance and for a moment of silence.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have no remarks this evening. Madam superintendent, do you?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, School Board of Directors as well as to the public. To begin this evening, we want to thank everyone in our learning community for attending our most recent budget town hall meeting. It was a very interactive session where we had participants role play in helping the decision-making as to how we should allocate our resources. So we want to thank you for sharing your insights. And there were a few of the major themes that emerged out of that discussion is that of the, with the $464 million that we have this year to fund our learning community, that we should spend our resources on curriculum, safety, mental health, and improving our facilities. So we're quite pleased that of the 50 people who attended that event, their views are closely aligned with our thinking about how we're going to continue to move our district forward. So thank you very much. Tonight, we also called this special meeting to approve an agreement with members of our learning community, the members of the Allentown Education Association. We are thrilled that we have reached an agreement between both parties. Many of you have talked, heard me talk often about the instructional core and the impact that teachers play in improving the instructional core and that the teacher is the greatest lever to improve student achievement. So we are excited that we've, we've made, we have this agreement and I think our members of the AEA are in the office. Ms. Franklin, the president, so we thank you. We look forward to our continued partnership and strengthening our relationship with our teachers and everyone who's in that teaching unit because I know it's not just the teacher. So we thank you very much. And in the spirit of teachers, we are celebrating Teacher Appreciation Week. So we have adopted or we're incorporating a, an initiative called Central Office Connections in which we are strengthening our connections to schools and direct support to schools. And so for the past few days, we've had central office leaders go out to schools and show our appreciation for our 1,300 teachers or people who are within that unit. So we want to say we appreciate you. We thank you for your hard work and commitment. Just think about this. I mean, this is one of the few professions that could say that they've touched everyone's lives because we've all had teachers. And we could think about many of us, all the teachers that we had who have really poured great seeds into our minds and our hearts and helped us to make us who we are today. So again, we want to say thank you to all the teachers. May is also Mental Health Awareness Month. Mental health and social emotional wellbeing are critical to student learning. Our schools play a central role in fostering what we call the whole child and supporting the wellbeing of our children and youth. When career adults at our schools develop nurturing relationships with students, it's it solidifies the students' connections to their school, family, and community. Those relationships are key to a child's mental health and overall well-being. And I want to add, and also the adults too, because we often talk about our children, but we know that our adults have unique needs and also are experiencing lots of trauma and lots of things happening within their lives. So, so we're happy, we have a series of activities, we're excited about it, and we encourage everyone in this room and everyone listening and all throughout our district that on Thursday, May 18th, is Mental Health Action Day. And on this day, as a learning community, we are encouraging all schools and all departments district-wide to take at least 10 minutes to participate in a wellness activity. So for our school leaders, we'll help give you some guidance on that, the activities, as well as our department leaders. And in support of this effort, we are also providing resources to every classroom. And on Wednesday, May 28th, we are encouraging all students and staff to wear green. And people knowing some things about my past, I'm like, green. That was a joke. In support of mental health awareness. So please join us, everyone. So mark your calendars. May 18th, as a collective learning community, One Allentown, we're going to take 10 minutes in support of Mental Health Awareness Day. And on the May 24th, we're going to wear green to support mental health awareness. Looking ahead, there's a lot of amazing things happening in Allentown, yay! There's an amazing day, I said that earlier this week when we went to a press event with the Da Vinci Center, and we said, it's a great day, an amazing day in Allentown. So, and then within the next two weeks, we're going to, lots will be happening. But on May 16th, we need everyone to put your sneakers on, your Allentown t-shirt, and walk the community with us. We're going to go knock on doors, invite our kindergarten students to school, back to school for next academic year. We're also going to raise awareness that Allentown is the place to be to, to be enrolled in Allentown School District. We're going to answer questions. We're going to just have a great time out there in the community. We will start our day at Hayes Elementary School. We'll kick off with a press conference there and talk about the benefits of early learning. And then members of our collective community, meaning our leaders, our teachers and others and our, our community partners, will go out into the community. So we invite anyone who's, hearing this, the sound of my voice, here's this, here, hearing that message, we invite you to participate. In the coming weeks, we will also share more information. Is this time of the year, you're like, she has long comments today, but I do, because there's so many things happening. We want everyone to hear and join in. So within the next coming weeks, we will share more information about a new program we will launch this summer, the Superintendent's Summer Reading Lead. Yay, reading, yes! I love reading, everybody knows I'm a language arts teacher, so I get so excited about reading. We will be encouraging and challenging everyone, students, staff, and others to join in this reading initiative. And we want to read over the summer, 50,000 minutes. Everybody say 50,000 minutes of reading throughout the summer for everyone. Our community partners are really excited about joining us in this effort as well. Additionally, we are also launching, and you should have received this all throughout our learning community, our summer programming is underway. So if families, students, everyone, even our staff, if you'd like to participate in our summer programming, there's, there's a lot of information there. We are also launching our, and I maybe I was supposed to talk about this later, Dr. Roth, but I'll say it all now. We're also launching our summer, tell me what the name, Dr. Roth?
Allentown Youth Internship Corps.
Yes, Allentown Youth Internship Corps, which we are going to employ 100 of our students, the Allentown School District students this summer and provide them with various opportunities to learn, learn some project management skills, leadership, problem solving. Again, our partners throughout the city, they are excited, Workforce Development Bureau and others, the City of Allentown. And so this is going to be a great effort. And for all the young people listening, we are going to pay you $15 an hour. And so we please sign up. And our students who are part of the Superintendent's Student Advisory Council will also help in this effort. So they'll be in the cafeteria and they'll let you, provide you with more information. Okay, this is exciting, everyone knows I love the arts. And let's give a roaring round of applause to the cast and crews of our spring musicals for their amazing performances this year. I want to congratulate the following students for their Freddie nominations, which were announced today. Dear of High School received two nominations for outstanding featured performance by an actress Natalie Vincent for her performance as Jojo. Outstanding featured performance by an actor M. Mellow as Horton the Elephant. And we got to move on to the west end of town. William Allen High School received three nominations. Outstanding use of costumes. Outstanding performance by an actress in a leading role, Nico Rodriguez, Rodriguez, sorry, as Audrey. And outstanding performance by an actor in a leading role, Eli Mercedes as Seymour. And let me tell you, if you missed these performances, I mean, they were amazing. I felt like I was at a Broadway show. The students were sensational and exceptional, so don't miss them next year in the fall. Please, we encourage you to come out. The Freddie Awards will be held in two weeks, on Thursday, May 25th. That's the same night as the board meeting, everything on the board meeting nights, at the State Theater in Easton. While we are here, my notes at a regular board meeting. So, so that concludes my remarks for the special meeting, and thank you, Madam President.
Do we have any public comments on agenda items?
We have no public comment on agenda items.
In that case, may I have a motion for approval of the Board of Directors' report?
So move.
Ms. Wilt?
I'll second.
Ms. Harris is the second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Ms. Brown Noel?
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. Santana?
Yes.
Ms. Wilt?
Yes.
Eight zero vote passes.
Right, I'm very happy to hear that. I'd like to invite the Allentown Education Association President to come forward to sign the collective bargaining agreement between the Allentown Education Association and the Allentown School District. It will go into effect September 1, 2023, and be in effect through August 31st, 2027. Ms. Franklin? And I am pleased and happy to be able to sign this.
I'm also pleased and happy.
This panel is wonderful. That came off of one of them.
You know, we'll be ready to open and ask you.
Ms. Franklin, would you like to say anything?
Members of the board, administration, members of the community, I would like to thank all of you for approving the tentative agreement between the Allentown School District and the Allentown Education Association. Dr. Burks, thank you for your very encouraging and kind words. And thank you for all of the things that you're doing for the members of my unit. I truly appreciate it. And on behalf of the Allentown Education Association, I want to let you know we are looking forward, very, very much forward to the next four years.
Ms. Franklin? I, I want you to know that we too are very, very happy to have been able to do this this evening. And we are very pleased with you and your team and what we've been able to accomplish together.
Absolutely, your team was excellent to work with, and my team worked really hard with them, and I truly appreciate it. Thank you.
This time, we are taking public comments on non-agenda items.
Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Can we do personnel first? My apologies.
I had a question. Might be out of order, but I had a question.
Actually, my script doesn't allow. Oh, I see what you're saying, okay. What's your question, Ms. Conover?
In the, in the, in the, the reporter says that we were making a motion to approve a collective bargaining agreement. And I was just wondering, when the president spoke of the union, she said tentative.
You're cheap.
Yes, she did.
Yes, it was a tentative agreement, but the tentative agreement became embodied in the collective bargaining agreement, which is the ultimate document that we are voting on for the term of the contract, in this case, four years. That is what we vote on.
Yeah, we just finalized it. And moved it from tentative to permanent.
It is not, it is no longer tentative by virtue of your vote. It is a binding collective bargaining agreement for the next four years.
Thank you for giving, providing clarity.
May I have a motion for approval of the personnel report? Ms. Wilt, is there a second?
Yes.
Dr. Santana, please call the roll.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Ms. Brown Noel?
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. Santana?
Yes.
Ms. Wilt?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
No.
Seven one vote passes.
Do we have any public comment cards on non-agenda items?
We have one public comment. Diane Hollowell?
Two minutes after a huge shout-out, please. Diane Hollowell, Holly and Drive. Before I start, I just wanted to give a shout-out to our understaffed IT department. Thank you for the short amount of time it took you to get all those Promethean boards in the classrooms across the district. We love them and they are definitely enhancing instruction. And also, I'm not sure if everyone is aware, we have a celebrity in the district and sitting right over here, our Director of Secondary Education, Randy Buck. He was a walk-on football player at Penn State. Sorry to call you out, but everybody's going to be asking you for tickets now, so thank you. Okay. Now, the reason I'm here to speak is because I watched the Executive Education Academy Charter Schools PowerPoint presentation on adding 90 more students to their charter. Sorry, I do not have a PowerPoint to keep you awake, you'll just have to listen to me. I am glad they shared with, with us their turnover in nine years. I quote, "A lot of new faces in the room." I quote, "New board members." Our district has also seen a lot of new faces in the room too. And I do feel very confident that we are going in the right direction, especially with our two new acting principals, Ms. Paternio and Mr. Derek. Fingers crossed that the word "acting" disappears in September. And I do want you to know that our district also partners with the Lehigh Valley Health Network through Century Promise. Our students also have job training, scholarships, and job placement opportunities. At Dear of Alone, we have 15 students taking advantage of this amazing opportunity, and they will have positions when they graduate. Our district also has a partnership with LifePath. Right now, Dear of has 12 students who go twice a week for job training and are guaranteed a job once they graduate. Our district offers emerging health program through Penn State and LTRIC in cooperation, again, with Lehigh Valley Health Network. Our district runs a successful virtual campus. It's up and running, offering choice and flexibility to our students. Our district covers the cost of SAT testing, AP testing, and free college applications to our students. And I just found this one out. Our district collaborates with the Carpenters Union and works with our students, taking DE math classes to train for the apprenticeship test. Our district partners with the Allentown School District Foundation, which funds grants through STEM programs, literacy, the arts, as well as scholarships to our students. Executive Charter touted they have 150 years of education, experience in education. I'm not sure if that was a good statistic to spout. At Dear of Alone, we have four staff holding doctorate degrees. If the board needs further data on years of experience, I'm sure the union can provide that information. The slide they presented labeled "services offered." Our district has the same services offered, but to our students. The slide on student life. At Dear of Alone, we have 38 clubs that our students can be involved in. And I love listening to the student reps, although they can be very long summaries. It is amazing to hear all the wonderful things happening at our high schools. Under the community slide, our district takes part in every item that the charter school listed on their slide. When I did my research for the elementary school partnerships, I created the visual, sorry, no PowerPoint. And I even discovered there were more after that was done. There are good, really, come on, I got like 30 seconds, maybe. There are good, now there are great things happening in this district. And it is true that executives' growth had been contributed to student services offered. And I truly believe the rise of students going to charter schools from our district was when we cut our staff. As a parent back then, would you want your elementary student experience the art only nine days a year? You only had an opportunity to check a library book out nine days a year, music classes nine days a year, phys ed, art classes nine days a year. Hopefully and thankfully, we will be getting those positions fully staffed. I do believe our district is going in the right direction. I can tell you from my 28 years in this district, there are a lot of enthusiastic, passionate, and dedicated staff working here. We just need the resources here in our district. But removing the cap and losing 90 more students takes another 2 million that our students lose out on. And I'm glad the charter school prides itself on good working relationships with the Allentown School District. I can only assume that will be true if the cap is not listed. One more paragraph, it's a quick one. Oh my God, I can't get my page apart. Are you kidding me? To end, that student David Del Rosa delivered a very compassionate speech. It really reminded me of our students delivering their graduation speeches. So I will end with this. What can charter schools do for the Allentown School District? Please keep the cap and keep the money here to serve our students. Thank you.
Is there any old, is there any old business to come before us this evening? Seeing none, is there any new business to come before us?
Yes. I, I didn't get to hit my unmute button quick enough, Ms. Matheson, when you asked for discussion regarding the, the contract. But I just wanted to make a comment, I just wanted to take a minute to personally thank every single one of our educators in the Allentown School District. Your efforts do not go unnoticed. You are appreciated and you are loved, and I see it every day, what they do for our kids. I'm especially close to the staff and educators at Sheridan, and I'm there on a daily basis. And they go above and beyond of what's expected of them. They work tirelessly every single day, spending money out of their own pockets. And I want them all. And I want them all to know that I see that. I see you. I know what you do, and you are greatly appreciated.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
Ms. Harris, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Or opposed? We are adjourned, and then we can move into the committee of the whole meetings.
So, the policy?
Okay, I'd like to call to order the, uh, the Policy Committee of the whole meeting of the Board of Directors of the school, of the school district for the city of Allentown for today, for May eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. The board welcomes and invites public comments. You may address the board on agenda or non-agenda items. The first opportunity for comments at the beginning of the meeting is limited to the agenda items only. If you choose to address the board, please fill out a comment card, and that's already should have been done and painted to the secretary. And comment cards are located on the podium near the door. Once recognized, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and kindly limit your remarks to three minutes. Three minutes. Is there any superintendent remarks?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ms. Harris. For the past few weeks since the last time we met, there's been a lot of hard work preparing for tonight's Policy Committee. So I'm really happy the Policy Committee met, and I want to thank the committee, Ms. Harris, as well as the committee for your hard work. Tonight, we have four items on the agenda. One item is the, a contract with the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, PSBA. This contract is the first step in resetting our commitment to updating our policies. Approval of the contract will allow PSBA to update all board docs with the most recent policy drafts, so that the administration can then review and present the most legally updated policies to the board. The policies on tonight's agenda include Policy zero zero six, Meetings, and that will be presented by Ms. Ramos. Policy two twenty-one, Ms. Polak will present a presentation and supporting data on the administrative recommendation, administration's recommendation of school uniforms. And Policy three oh two, Hiring of Superintendent, Assistant Superintendents, and that will be presented by Ms. Ramos, but hopefully they'll let me stay a little while, so we don't have to exercise that policy. Okay.
You're not going nowhere.
We're not going nowhere.
Not going anywhere, so we're not worried about that. We can put the policy in. All right, at this time, we were only taking public comments on agenda items. Do we have any?
We do not.
All righty. Okay, and superintendent always talked about the four agenda items for this evening, so I'm going to, so we're going to go ahead. The first one is the PSBA contract. Ms. Ramos?
Thank you, Ms. Harris. As Dr. Burks mentioned, tonight, we're requesting the board's approval for a contract of professional services with the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, also known as PSBA, uh, in the amount of six thousand four hundred dollars. This contract will help the, the administration reset the review of policies. The PSBA will review our policies contained in our current manual, the documents that support those policies, like collective bargaining agreements, student handbooks, any updated state laws. They'll then help us bring forward more revised drafts and a comprehensive um, update of draft from series zero zero to nine hundred, so that when we come for you and we share drafts with you, they're the most updated drafts based on the most updated laws, legislation, et cetera. Currently, there are some significantly old policies in the board docs, and there have been drafts upon drafts that have existed since those policies were adopted, and PSBA will help us get to the most recent draft, so we can move a little faster through the, through the policy series. So tonight, we're requesting the board's approval for that contract in the sum of six thousand four hundred dollars.
Okay. This is an actual item. May I have a motion to approve the PSBA contract to update?
I make a motion.
Okay. Mrs. Cole Brown?
And then Audrey second.
And Audrey second? All right, um, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, the motion is carried. The second item is Policy zero zero six, and that will be presented by Ms. Ramos as well.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. This is my first time presenting policy, so Ms. Harris has been patient with me. Based on what I believe that, that we heard at the last board meeting, we pulled Policy zero zero six to bring forward this evening. Policy zero zero six was last revised in February of two thousand eighteen. So in the policies that you received, you'll see some red font in there. That, that's the updated draft and some of the updated recommendations, most of which PSBA helps us with, some of which we direct as well. And then it's ultimately reviewed by our Solicitor's Office. So the first page of the policy authority quorum, presiding officer, meeting notifications. There are not significant changes. There's really almost no changes in that language. Where the significant changes come into play are on the next page, and this is where we made every effort to capture what we heard in the discussion at, at the last month's meeting. So in regards to meeting notification, if you look at number six, this was added, um, we believe at the request of the board, and we hope this captures what the board was after, and I'm going to read it so that we have it, that we're all on the same page. So number six states, "Notice of the change in location of an open meeting of the board shall be posted at least twenty-four hours in advance on the district's website, at the district's administration offices, and at the new location for the open meeting. The meeting location may be changed upon recommendation of the superintendent, upon consultation with the board president to address concerns with inclement weather, anticipated public attendance at an open meeting, or other good cause. Board members may request a change in location to the superintendent or board president, but the discretion to change the location remains with the superintendent, unless at least three board members request the change in writing at least five business days in advance of the meeting in question." That was specific language we added based on the conversation we heard at the last meeting. This section around agenda notifications is simply some adjusted language about the timing in which we post and share agendas and where we share them. The next red section, Order of Business, we updated to make sure that this reflects the Order of Business in which the regular board meeting at, at the end of the month, uh, the order in which the regular board meeting at the end of the month flows. And the remaining portions of this policy under additions to the agenda, this speaks to when and how the board may take deliberate or official action to add items to the agenda. It spells out emergencies, if there are things that arise within twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. It takes into account things that our residents or taxpayers may bring forward to the meeting, where the board may take official action to refer that matter to staff, to conduct research, or to include it on a future agenda. And it also gives you, um, the language on how the board may formally add an item to the agenda by a majority vote. The rest of the policy remains this, pretty much the same from two thousand eighteen. So this is considered a first reading. If you have any questions or changes, we would make those changes and bring this back at the end of the month for a second reading.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, um, in regards to, um, number six. So I'm looking at the five days, um, requests, and I'm thinking about, um, what recently happened here, and sometimes you might not have five days, sometimes it could be two days or three days where we're notified. Can there be an amendment saying if it is a fire safety issue, that it's mandated that it's changed? And that, that's something I'm, I'm kind of opposed, speaking to open conversation with the board. Because I'm concerned that, okay, if it's five days and then we find out in two days that three different groups are coming with like a hundred and fifty people or buses and all that stuff, how do we kind of move, because we're not restricted, because we didn't give an official five-day notice?
Ms. Noel Brown, this is, um, we can adjust that if that's the will of the board.
Right, that's what I'm asking. That's what I'm asking them.
I have no will to change it. I'm, I want to stick to the way it was written. I don't know about any other board members, but I'm sticking to, um, the policy.
I have a question.
Then you ready? All right, ahead of this Lisa.
So the Policy zero zero six, is it, is this a copy of the whole policy? And then you put the changes in?
The changes are in red, so you should have received.
Go ahead.
No, you should, it's about six or seven pages, the newer policy?
Right, and I'm looking at that, but I'm look, also looking at the policy that was last revised on February twenty-second, two thousand eighteen. And this has nine pages, and then also, if you look under Parliament, just starting with parliamentary authority. There's, um, here, it said the solicitor shall, in two thousand eighteen, it says the solicitor shall act as parliamentarian for all meetings of the board, and that's not listed on this document here. And then there's, there's quite a bit, like the meeting notifications. I see calendar year. I don't see any of that stuff. Um, so I'm just, that's, that's my reason for asking. Is this the same document? I mean, is this a full document, or did you pull from the document?
So the shorter policy where you see the parliamentarian language, that's the adopted version. It was last revised in two thousand eighteen. The longer nine-page document, it does still say last revised, but this is the updated draft, and based on what PSBA and the solicitor reviewed, that parliamentarian statement is not in the update. I don't know if that answers your question, but the nine?
Not really, because I'm trying to, I'm, I'm looking at what you sent, what we all have tonight, right? And I see all the red. But I'm also looking at the, those zero series that I have, that was given to me by this board, and I'm, it's just not matching up. But this is, like, we still have a whole nother week before it goes to our regular board meeting, but there's some things here that's just not in what I have that was actually last revised on February twenty-second, two thousand eighteen. And this also, um, that you gave us tonight, also says last revised November twenty-second, two thousand eighteen.
Correct.
An initial policy was adopted on November twentieth, nineteen ninety-seven, so I'm trying to figure out what am I missing?
So if you are to approve the policy, the last revised date on the document that has the red updates will change to the current date of, uh, whenever the May, May twenty-fifth or the end of the month board meeting. That date will be officially changed if the board actually adopts this revision.
Do you show strikeouts on this?
There aren't strikeouts, no.
There's no stri, oh.
I think part of the difficulty might be, you showed additions, but you didn't show strikeouts, so the parliamentarian language that was taken out from the prior draft is not reflected it, as a strikeout. It might be helpful, uh, in advance of the next meeting to do a highlight and strike version to show the language that was stricken from it.
We can do that.
Well, counsel, I want to say this. I'm looking at meeting notifications on this document that's in, written in, in black, right? You see that?
I, I don't have it before me, yeah.
Okay, so there's a document. Um, Ms. Ramos, do you see, uh, meeting notifications?
Yes.
Yes.
That's in black, so that means that that is the policy as it, it's reading now. There's no revisions in that area. Is that correct?
The, the document that says just notice is adopted.
Where it says meeting notifications. You see that paragraph?
That has not been changed. Is that correct?
Right, and so I'm looking at the document that was last revised, the February twenty-second, two thousand eighteen. There is nothing in this document that says meeting notifications. So if that is what we're looking to move forward to our regular board meeting, that should be in red, because I don't see that in, anywhere in here.
They changed the heading, so the heading of notice and the heading of meeting notifications was the, was the shift. The language is primarily the same, but they changed the heading.
And so there's calendar year. I don't see that. Fiscal year, I don't see that. Number two, um, there's some significant changes here, and so maybe we, I don't know. Uh, maybe we need to look at this, because I'm not, I'm comparing it. I'm comparing these apples to the oranges, and I'm just saying that this is not the same document.
Well, it isn't the same, though.
Yeah, it's, it's not. In notice on number one, it states that "Notice of regular meeting shall be given publication and posting showing the date and time and place for the fiscal year at least three days prior." That was the adopted policy at the time. The meeting notifications section in draft is suggesting similar language, uh, around the calendar year.
Number two, under notice, it says notice of all special meetings shall be given by publication, right?
Correct.
Number two, on the document that you've given us, that's in black, it says notice of all special meetings shall be given by publication and posting.
Twenty-four hours.
At last, this says twenty-four, this one says forty-eight hours.
Correct, we're suggesting that shift in the draft.
Okay, so you're saying, okay, let me go back, and I'm just trying to understand it. I'm not trying to be the thorn, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So, counsel, you're saying that whatever's taken out should be stricken. Is that correct? So that is, so that is, so we, um.
Uh, yeah, I'm just thinking that it, it be submitted to you in an alternate format where all of the changes from what the most recent other revision would be, would be reflected. Those items taken out would be stricken, and those new items could be in red or whatever color, highlighted, or whatever color you want.
Thank you for that, Claire. Thank you.
So you don't go back and look at the old document?
Exactly, thank you.
Okay, so I'm just, I'm just summarizing. I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So we're going to get a full page or however many, ten pages or whatever it is, of what the policy will look like when it's done, including the old policy and all the new updates? Because she's right, like, some of this just isn't matching at all.
Yeah, if that's your request, we can absolutely provide the strikeout version with the highlight of the changes.
So I want to ask the board this. Do you want to table this until we get something more concrete?
I mean, Ms. Conover is right. I can't really, like, some of this just isn't, I, I know it's the same thing, but it doesn't look the same, some of it. So it's kind of hard to distinguish what's being changed and what's staying the same, and.
So, Mr. Palmer, we can, uh, we can, we can continue talking about this. It doesn't have to be voted on in two weeks. We can continue the discussion.
Is this the first reading?
Yes.
The first reading.
Okay, i- as a first reading, uh, it just moves the process along, but between first and second reading, the administration can give you the changes, and then you can modify it at that level. That would just keep the process moving, so we're not delaying this any further, because I know that there's some request to make these changes, so we keep the ball rolling. Um, and I would suggest that we consider that as part of the first reading, and then by the second reading, you'll, you'll share that, and then you'll be able to not look at old, uh, policies and try to put them side by side.
I just have a quick comment on the five days versus, did you say two or three days?
Let me go back to, well, it.
Making it less days. My, my opinion is that we should keep it at five only because we don't want to make it less time. We need to allow time to be able to secure an alternate location, and we can't make that twenty-four, thirty hours.
No, I wasn't suggesting that. What I was suggesting is, in the event that we find out something is occurring, and it's under the five days, because it's saying that it has to happen within five. We have to give a notice by five days. If, if it's day four, there's no switch. And my concern is if there is a fire safety issue where we know, where we hear two days before a meeting that we're going to be bombarded here, then we should still have the option of being able to change location. So that, that was my concern.
My, my, my comment to that would be, there, it's, it's a traveling show, so when you, when you re, when you relocate, it, there's, it's time-consuming for IT. I mean, this whole, basically, this whole setup has to be relocated somewhere else.
Right, yeah.
So I, I, my, my, I would say that, you know, part of, I would assume part of the reasoning behind the five days is to allow for all of. reasoning behind the five days is to allow for all of the logistical things to happen to make sure that the meeting can actually function in the new location. So I would be reluctant to, to shorten those days because that takes our IT away from other things that they're doing. If they have five days to strategically plan, okay, we know the meeting's moving, but we still have to do all of our everyday perfunctory business, we can weaken a lot for that time as opposed to turning the apple cart upside down in two days. That would just be my, my thought process behind that.
And I'm going to go along with that because we have moved the meetings before. Um, but we had five days to, for it to happen. You know, a three-day or two-day turnaround, that's, that's kind of impossible. So that's why we put in there five days.
Okay.
I have a comment or question, and this may be um, for Mr. Soltatic. Um, regarding the meetings that we have to notify the public, um, I think it was what, three days in advance? Um, I know we have to publish it in uh, the morning call. But I, I know that we used to um, announce it on social media, and I haven't seen that in quite some time, unless I'm missing something. Um, not everybody gets the newspaper delivered, I know they have an online version, but with the morning call, you have to pay for the digital subscription, so not everybody can see that. So I think that we need to start posting the meeting days and times again um, on social media. I don't know what the requirement is, if we're required to post it there or not. Um, but I think that we need to, because again, n- not everyone has access to the morning call.
Not, you're not legally required to post it uh, on your social media. You are legally required to put it in a newspaper of general circulation in the district. Uh, but uh, the board could impose an additional requirement to place it on the district's website and to also uh, uh, place it on your social media. Uh, that could be a requirement in the policy. You can, you can exceed the policy requirements, you can't uh, remove the newspaper advertising.
No, and I wasn't saying to remove it, um, I, I think that we, you know, I, I know that's a requirement, but I think, you know, as a courtesy, we need to put something in there that we're going to announce these meetings um, on social media as well.
Maybe so please, I'll go along with that, because that was a good practice before, I don't know what, how we got away from it. But I definitely want that, would like that back, because that was a great way to advertise our meetings to those who are on social media, because like you said, that everybody does the newspaper.
I got it, I'm gonna add it to where we have newspaper, website and social media.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? So my question, okay, so I have a question about, you know, this, this is just a motion to just keep moving forward. Because we not have, we're still with the first reading, correct?
Yeah, if you make the motion to move it forward, we'll continue with the changes that you're suggesting here. We'll provide a new cleaned version with the changes and the strikeout, so that when you're ready for the second reading, you'll have another update.
Okay, so I'm going to ask.
One quick question, Ms. Vivi, I'm, I'm so sorry, I just noticed here, um, safety task force is listed twice. Do you know why? Is there a reason? Just look at it like I'm new, under um, order of business, it's a type, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you. This is twice as important.
It is, it is.
I'll make the motion for the administration to take into consideration the, the changes that were brought forward by the board today for um, the second reading.
Do we normally vote on the first reading?
Yes, we have.
And Ms. Matt, the second, move it forward. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I say the motion carry. So now we're going to go into the third item, policy two-two-one, dress and grooming. And I'll be by Ms. Tiffany Pollak.
Good evening, I will be presenting the findings from our Allentown School District Uniform Dress Code Review. The Office of Student Services. In collaboration with Communications and the Donovan Group, surveyed students, staff and families on the topic of school uniforms. You can forward the slide. We gave a total of three surveys. Um, the first survey had four thousand and thirty-three respondents. There were also six focus groups that were conducted to gain additional insight on the perspectives of our various stakeholders. A total of three thousand three hundred and thirty-six students in grades six through twelve took the second student-only survey, and that was also to gain additional insight from our student population. And a total of twenty administrators also completed a survey. So this slide shows the results from Survey One that asked if parents, students and staff were in favor of the uniform policy. I'll provide an overview to how the results are broken down. So again, a combined total of four thousand and thirty-three responses were collected. Of those responses, one thousand two hundred and fifty-four were elementary families and one thousand three hundred and eighty-six were secondary families. Overall, four, forty-four point eighteen percent strongly agreed, agreed, and forty point eight four percent disagreed, strongly disagreed with maintaining the current policy. Sixty-one percent of our families strongly agreed, agreed, and twenty-seven point twenty-six percent disagreed, strongly disagreed with maintaining the uniform policy. Not surprisingly, only fourteen point seven eight percent of students strongly agreed, agreed in favor of the uniform policy, and seventy-one point five percent disagreed, strongly disagreed. Staff indicated fifty-three percent support versus forty-one percent against the current policy. The second survey was given to secondary students in grades six through twelve. Three thousand three hundred and thirty-six students took the survey. Two thousand five hundred and twelve students in middle, in middle school and eight hundred and twenty-four high school students. Of those students, two thousand two hundred and forty-three were in favor of eliminating the uniform policy. Seven hundred and fifty-four students were in favor of simplifying the uniform policy, and three hundred and thirty-nine were in favor of maintaining the uniform policy. Survey three was given to administrators and twenty administrators completed that survey. Sixty-five percent of administrators who took the survey would choose to eliminate the uniform policy. Additionally, sixty-five percent of administrators who took the survey feel that the uniform policy should not be leveled, meaning elementary different from secondary or vice versa. There were many, many comments, thousands of comments. Um, administrators, um, just to give you a little of what uh, the administrators added, that they felt that um, the uniforms or not having uniforms would be more affordable. Um, and they tend to be more costly than regular clothes at this point. Um, schools are purchasing items for their uniform bank, so that would allow them to use their school budgets for something else. Um, and they felt that it allowed students to express diversity and a sense of individuality. So this slide summarizes the comments from the large number we received, so the themes across all stakeholders. The majority of student responses focused on ability to express themselves through clothing, comfort. Wearing hoodies was mentioned hundreds of times. That is all the students want to do is wear hoodies, um, in colder months or sweatpants. And that what they're wearing doesn't impact what they're learning. Um, staff often remarked that they're spending a lot of time on enforcing uniforms, which is taking away from instructional time, and wearing uniforms has little impact on student learning. Overall, there were some comments about the nature of bullying and that it seemed um, that it's something that would likely happen regardless if students wear uniforms or not. And again, overall, students want to wear hoodies, they want to have choice. They did feel keeping their ID on their person was important, which we agree, um, and to eliminate the uniform policy overall. There's limited research available on the value of school uniforms. However, the University of Ohio found that school uniforms may not be the most effective way to improve student behavior and engagement. The National Center for Education Statistics reported that a greater percentage of schools where seventy-six percent or more of the students were eligible for free or reduced lunch than of schools where lower percentages of students were eligible, reported that they required school uniforms. And last education week stated that schools that enroll predominantly students of color are more likely to enforce strict dress codes and are more likely to remove students from class for violating them. We also took a look at local and urban-like school districts, um, their dress code policies and guidelines, and found that most of our local school districts do not have a uniform policy. And those are on the left. And the larger, more urban-like districts have some level of uniforms, so you see Baltimore City Schools varies by school. Um, LA Unified also varies by school. Philadelphia currently has a uniform policy, but from talking to colleagues who work in Philadelphia, it sounds like they have some like problems that we do, and not all students are wearing the uniform, so enforcement is a concern. The recommendation would be for the board to take action to eliminate Policy two-two-one point one, the school uniform program, and adopt Policy two-two-one, dress and grooming. So our current active policy two-two-one point one school uniform program was adopted in two thousand thirteen. PSBA recommended it be deleted due to it being highly procedural and not recommended for policy. They recommend placing in administrative regulation or guidelines um, for the pop, to accompany the policy two-two-one, dress and grooming. So now I'll just review a little of the policy, so the purpose of draft policy two-two-one is to recognize that each student's mode of dress and grooming is a manifestation of their personal style and individual preference. It includes language stating that the board may require students to wear standard dress or uniforms. It gives the board the authority to impose limitations on students' dress in school and the authority to require students again to wear standard dress or uniforms. In the delegation of responsibility section, it gives principals or designee the responsibility to monitor student dress and grooming. It also speaks to um, the superintendent or designee ensuring that all school rules implementing this policy impose only the minimum necessary restrictions on the exercise of students' taste and individuality. And last, it, it notes that staff members shall be instructed to demonstrate by example positive attitudes towards neatness, cleanliness, propriety, modesty and good sense in attire and appearance. Do you have any questions about the policy, or I can wait until I finish the presentation? So next steps would be to communicate the decision with students, families and community. Develop dress and grooming guidelines for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And we did ask a number of questions around what that dress code could look like or what a simplified uniform policy would look like, so that we knew when we came to this point, we would already have some feedback from our stakeholders. We would include the dress and grooming guidelines in the handbook, student and family handbook. Um, request board action to approve that handbook in June. And of course, that would be followed by communication with the decision again to our students, families and community. Do you have any questions?
I have a comment. Um, I, I, I fully support this. Um, I've been waiting for this day since Gianna started kindergarten. I, I've spent so much money on uniforms that she can only wear to school. Where else is she going to wear this stuff? Um, and it, quite frankly, it's a waste. Um, so I'm fully one hundred percent in support of doing away with uniforms. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I mean, I can see both sides of this, because as a parent, sometimes for me, it's more affordable, it all depends on the students that you have. Like, my kids came from New York originally, so they're a little bit more trendier there, so that means my pockets get burned a little bit more. Whereas in here in this time right now, the kids only want to wear hoodies. I feel like that's where the disconnect is, when it's like winter time, they don't wear coats anymore, I don't know if anyone noticed that. Kids do not wear winter coats anymore, they just wear hoodies. And if they have to find a hoodie that's plain with no logo on it, that's difficult, I'm telling you, it is so hard. So when we, you know, bend the rules and just give them a hoodie, and then they get to school, and then, you know, they're getting into trouble because they're wearing the hoodie with a little logo on it, that's difficult. So I think, yeah, this needs to be, yeah, we need to do away with this, yeah.
I think when it comes to hoodies, though, if it's a standard hoodie, Nike, Adidas, Reebok, I think that, that's acceptable. Um, and of course, the hoods would have to be down inside the school buildings. I don't think a standard logo, I, I, I don't have a problem with kids wearing those types of hoodies.
But to be honest with you, um, as long as it doesn't, as long as it, it's, you know.
As long as there's no profanity on it.
Or anything like that, I think they should be able to wear hoodies. Um, I remember my son was in school and certain parts of Allen were warm and certain parts were cold, and he got in trouble so many times because of, he put the hood on when it was cold in the classroom. And this one teacher, but I'm leaving alone. But however, um, that's just the norm. That is just our norm now, and so because it is, we, why not? I, I have no problem with, does anyone else on our board have a problem with the hoodies?
Yeah, I just, I have a comment, I can also see both sides because um, generally speaking, I like uniforms, um, I'm, I'm not against uniforms. Um, but I do see the other side of it too. And um, I think that as a parent and a board member, we have much, much bigger fish to fry than, you know, if you want to wear that instead of this, then wear that. As long as, you know, it's being monitored, I do think that we need to give um, our teachers um, a little bit more authority to be able to make decisions because we don't, we don't want it to appear that they're either being too strict or letting things slide or whatever the case may be, I certainly don't want kids getting suspended or detention or whatever it is because of a uniform, so um.
And they were.
Yeah, so it's, it's, um, it's, again, I, I, I like uniforms in schools. Um, not for the reasons that kids think, not because I'm the mean teacher. Um, but just um, just to make sure that everybody's wearing the same thing, because I always worry about the kids that don't have parents that can afford to get them the Nike or everything else, and I always worry about those children. But overall, you know, I'm, I'm one to always side with faculty because they are the ones that are with our children all day, every day, so um, I'm, I'm okay with, with doing away with it.
Right, so the faculty have gone along, wanted us to go ahead and, you know, eliminate the uniform, but we, the uniform can be worn if they want, because now's the choice, you can wear it if you want. However, you can also wear, you know, your everyday clothes as well, and like I stated, you know, uniforms are becoming more and more expensive because they can't. Because those companies know they, we have to buy them, and so they're more expensive than regular clothes. And you have to remember, we are hundred percent free lunch. Those of you who were not with us, you know, twenty, twenty-one, that was, that was a tough time. COVID was a killer. And it was, you know, um, one of, one of the nonprofits itself, I had to give it to them, they, they got grant money, they raised money, everything was being, so they could, so they could give out uniforms and give out uniform vouchers. Uh, they still do that.
A lot of organizations.
Yeah, a lot, well, I'm sorry, yeah, a lot of nonprofits, organizations do, but that was, that was the one that was really, really heading, heading, heading it, and then others followed. We have to understand that in our school district. And because we are urban school, i- i- it looks like you're penalizing urban schools and all the other schools around us don't have a dressing uniform.
Another thing with the um, with, with the nonprofits, I know that they do a lot of um, uniform giveaways in the summer and that's great for our community. But now they can put that money towards other things that the kids really need. The kids don't need a uniform to go to school and learn. They need backpacks, they need pencils, they need notebooks, they need folders, they need other stuff that will be good for them to learn. They don't need a uniform to go to school and learn.
Amen.
Well, they can, they can still give, I'm sorry, um, Ms. Ortiz, were you done? I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm done.
Okay, they could also give clothing vouchers. I mean, so there's other things. It doesn't, doesn't necessarily have to be um, a uniform. And one of the things, I I think, I want to thank the district for um showing us, giving us those uh, those numbers uh, as it relates to other, other school districts. And so what happens is we never want our kids to feel ostracized or feel um, inequitable when they go to other schools. So let's just use LCTI, you know? The one thing that LCTI does is they want, they ensure that the students have their IDs. You know, so I I having an ID as a requirement would be wonderful. Um, also, I I said this before, um, Dr. Burks, maybe this is an opportunity for all of our school, especially at the high school level, right? Our school stores to be open and 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 let the kids wear, you know, if they're on a track team, let them wear their track uniforms or if they, they're just school, you know, sell sweatshirts, you know, things like that. I mean, there's different things that we can do besides um, making them feel punished or not, um, not allowing them to be a part of the process. I think that we'll gain positive results by doing away with the uniforms. Um, because they'll, they too will begin to say, hey, listen, we are part of this, they're listening to us. Why make them wear it? I mean, me personally, I used to be against um, Mc-Mac socks. Now yet, the other day I had them on, you know what I mean? So, you know, is it gonna kill somebody? Because, you know what I mean? You know, let's choose our best battles wisely. So I'm definitely in favor of getting rid of um, that uniform mandate.
Yeah, ASD has nine non-problems and that's not one of them.
I'd like to say something.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Having been here pre-uniform, through the uniforms, I was telling Dr. Burks the other day, my girls cut off the collars and would wear them underneath their Allen Pride sweatshirts as Dickies, so they never actually wore the uniforms. Found that out when they uh, when I went to clean out their closets after they graduated. Um, but it, it was always a challenge. It was a challenge in the younger grades because the kids don't know how to tuck in their shirts. They don't know how to put their belts. There was always that challenge. There was the challenge of your homeroom teacher thought one, one thing was acceptable, great, uh, period seven thought that was unacceptable. So there was no continuity. And every morning when I walk my dogs, I check out everybody's fashion because nobody's wearing them anyway. So we might as well just get rid of them.
Ms. Will, I agree. I mean, at this point in the school year, if all Gianna has to wear is a pair of navy blue leggings, that's what she's wearing to school. At most days, she doesn't wear a proper, what ASD calls a uniform.
Anyone else?
All right, may I have a motion to move to uh, policy two-two-one, dress and grooming forward to the regular board meeting on, meeting on Thursday, May twenty-fifth, two thousand three?
So moved.
So moved.
All right. Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. All right, now we have the uh, fourth item, which is policy three-zero-two, hiring the superintendent, assistant, and assistant superintendent, uh, presented by Mr. Say. No, it's Mr. Ross Moss.
Um, I'm gonna try, Ms. Harris. I want to preface this one by saying there, there was not a lot of opportunity for strikeout. This policy was adopted September twenty-fourth, nineteen ninety-eight. So um, it's essentially a new policy. But um, we will do as we stated in the last and go back through if there's any strikeout, we will add that. So um, this policy speaks to the employment of superintendent and assistant superintendent. And I believe Ms. Noel Brown, this was the policy you had been asking us to bring forward. So um, the first section of the policy is around authority. Um, and it speaks to the assistant superintendent and superintendent be appointed by majority vote. And that a contract for an assistant superintendent or superintendent um, is at a term for three to five years. So three, four, or five. Um, it speaks to uh, also what happens if the contracts being extended where um, ninety days prior to the expiration date of that um, contract that the board should notify by five or more members, the assistant superintendent and superintendent that the board intends to retain him or her. Uh, and then it speaks to if the board fails to do that, that they could be extended for a one-year period. It then again speaks to um, anytime the board votes to retain a superintendent or assistant superintendent, they may be retained for a term of three to five years. Uh, that's for both positions. And then the bottom of the first page, when the board finds it impossible or impractical to fill the vacancy, they can appoint uh, an acting superintendent or acting assistant superintendent. My whole binder up here.
By the way, all of this is reflected of the law. So you couldn't change this anyway.
Um, the next section that I wanted to draw your attention to was under guidelines and then recruitment and assessment of superintendent candidates. This speaks to the board um, actively seeking candidates who meet the qual qualifications and requirements for the position. It may be aided in this task by a committee of board members and/or the services of professional consultants. Um, items one through four under there speak to preparing the qualifications, the job description, and the informational materials um, that would go to the candidates describing the district's uh, goals. In number four, it speaks to uh, the opportunity for selected applicants to visit schools, meet with internal staff and stakeholders at the board's invitation. Number five speaks to the opportunity to solicit community input on the superintendent's search and hiring process through community meetings, surveys, and other forms of community engagement. And number six speaks to the opportunity for the board to enlist a consultant to assist them in the completion of these tasks. It then speaks to recruitment, screening, and evaluation of candidates be conducted in accordance with board policy and board established leadership criteria. And the board shall determine prior to interviewing finalists, which expenses are associated with those interviews and what the board is um, approving be reimbursed. The next section speaks to pre-employment requirements and primarily focuses on the vetting of candidates. Their obligations to report information, whether they've been terminated or had any issues in, in, as related to criminal penalties, things of that nature. Um, they should report arrests, convictions, et cetera. The following page, again, the entire page is brand new. Um, speaks to the employment contracts and as Attorney Sultanic stated, these are things that we are required to have in the contracts. So it's in items one through eleven, these are provisions that should be found in both the superintendent and assistant superintendent's contracts with respect to the conditions of their employment, their certification, requirements, compensation, uh, termination provisions, um, the opportunity, if any, to work outside of the district. Um, and then what compensation for unused sick time, et cetera, can be transferred or paid out. And then any post-retirement benefits that would be allowable per that contract. And the last section of this policy, again, new, um, an update from nineteen ninety-eight is the removal of or severance of employment with the superintendent or assistant superintendent. A superintendent or assistant superintendent may be removed from office and have their contracts terminated after a hearing by a majority vote of all members of the board and in accordance with the law. And the board shall publicly disclose at the next regularly scheduled meeting, the removal from office of the superintendent or assistant superintendent. And then it speaks to the negotiated severance of employment prior to the end of that term. And on the last page, there are two items um, that speak to the terms that could be taken relative to that severance. That is the gist of policy three-oh-two that was adopted September twenty-fourth, nineteen ninety-eight. So we're in our first reading of an updated draft.
Just as a note, uh, in two thousand and twelve, state law changed dramatically the hiring process for superintendents. So our policy in its current form is completely out of date uh, anyway.
Any questions?
I have a comment or maybe a question. So we went over the policy part. Um, now we're gonna need to talk about the regulation part because I think we all were clear. At least I was, I thought, as far as the policy is concerned, but I'm concerned. Or I want to know what we're doing as far as the regulation part because the regulation part is the process. It's the process of regulating and how, how, how that this policy is being regulated because in that one last little sentence or paragraph somewhere, I wasn't looking at the screen. But what it told me was if we wanted to, we had a, 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 a majority, we can repeat the same stuff we've done in the past that I'm still trying to get over. What is the regu, what is the process? What is the process we're gonna use when we get the community involved? What is the process we're gonna use? Um, and in the termination, we see, we see the policy, but again, I'm gonna go to that regulations piece that I've been talking about for a whole lot of years since I've been on this board. Can somebody help me?
Well, normally boards don't approve regulations. It's usually an administrative task in every school district organization to have the administration develop regulations to implement the board policy. So uh, I'm a little bit at a loss as to the board's role regulatory development.
So in other words, I think I heard you, I heard it said before, I don't know if you said it, um, Mr. Sultani. But it's not up to the board to be involved in a process of the regulations. And so what happens is again, the board is out, correct me if I'm wrong, we, in other words, we, we don't, we don't have to be privy to what the process is like. Is that what it is?
The regulations can be shown to you, but the administration prepares the regulations, not the board. So, and the board doesn't vote on the regulations, the administration typically prepares the regulations, which is like, it's like legislative activity. So the state legislature passes laws and the state agencies adopt regulations. In this case, the agency is the administration.
So in other words, we, as a board, whatever goes on in the buildings or whatever goes on with our superintendent or assistant superintendent, we just get the final, the final vote, they stay or they leave. We don't really have a say in terms of the process unless it becomes something legal. And we, we, we subpoenaed the court or something. I'm just trying to get a full understanding.
Uh, but generally, these regulations, your policy could be more specific under the circumstances. The board controls the policy development, but the actual day-to-day implementation of things are typically done by the administration. And it, and but the administration does not have the power to exceed the policy parameters adapt, adopted by the board.
So it sounds to me, and it's just me, that we need to work a little bit more on this policy. Because after we prove this policy, whatever goes on at the regulation level, we really have no control over.
Other than, yes, other than uh, taking control when the regulation or the regulations are inconsistent with the board policy or the administration's implementations inconsistent with the board policy.
Attorney Sultanic, what I'm hearing you say is applicable to all policies.
That is correct.
This is a unique situation because this is hiring and 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 moving forward with um, electing a superintendent, which is our, the board's one sole person, employee. When I read this, I I read that there's, there's latitude in, in, in these statements that allow us to make those decisions. Um, that, that Ms. Conover is, is addressing. And I think it's good that there, you know, there, there's choices that the, that, that the board can do. And I think that's important because this incarnation of the board potentially changes every two years. Um, and if we narrowly dictate what's in the policy and then we're no longer here and Dr. Burks retires twenty years from now, are we, are we locking that incarnation of the board into a set policy that this board decided was the appropriate thing? So I think personally, that the latitude that this policy in the way it is written actually gives us the latitude as, as board members to, to choose the regulatory process in the hiring. Um, if I'm reading this the way I think I am. Anybody else?
Anyone else?
That's what I understood as well from reading it.
And I agree with Dr. Sultani and Ms. Nancy. Um, the fact that we do have that logic, you know, that attitude to do um, what is necessary and what we want to, you know, when it comes to our one employee. And so like I said, you know, we, we keep this employee for quite a while, as long as she wants to be here. How, however, we want to be able to set up, you know, new boards from now to be able to do what they need to do by their board members. So I, I like this policy.
I just uh, had a question. Um, and I hate to sound like I'm nitpicking or anything, but do we need to add the words if at any point in here, like, what happens if we find out they did something, I don't know, two years after they were hired? That caused them to be arrested that wasn't kosher, like what? Do we need to add at any point in here or is it, does it cover that without those words in there?
Where are you referencing, Mr. Palmer?
Where are you referencing, Mr. Palmer?
Um, hold on, let me go back. Each candidate shall report on the designated form all arrests and convictions as specified on the form. Candidates shall likewise report arrests and or convictions that occur subsequent to initial submitting the form. Failure to accurately report such arrests and convictions may subject the individual to denial of appointment, termination if already hired, and/or criminal prosecution. So if they do something, um, I guess while they're already employed and they don't tell us and they go through the entire process, we never find out about it. Is that covered in here? Because it doesn't seem like.
If, if, if a candidate fails to disclose something and it comes to our intention subsequently, we can take action on a disciplinary basis on there because usually in the application process, it says, you know, did you do certain things in your past? And if indeed you omitted that, that could be um, an actionable item uh, to go after the superintendent slash applicant. So there's, there's nothing that you need to per se do in this policy under the circumstances.
Okay, so something happens while they're already hired. We don't need to add anything in there for that.
No, we're governed under that uh, policy under the school code has a process uh, termination procedure for a superintendent or superintendent.
Yeah, oh, thank you.
Um, a question, Nancy. The part that says on board established leadership criteria, is that the piece that you're saying that piece should be left open for when we're doing the hiring process to come up with that criteria then? Because this is something that would be established. So you're saying wait until then?
Yes, because the then constituted board may have a different view of leadership criteria than you in two thousand twenty-three think. you in twenty twenty-three think would be the best under the circumstances. The board that's looking for their own superintendent may want to establish what's important to them in leading them with with their next leader.
Thank you, yes. That's what I was.
Yeah, I just need the clarity on that part.
Anyone else?
I plan to move forward to this irregular board meeting on Thursday, May twenty fifth, twenty twenty-three. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
They have a second?
A second.
Okay, uh, any discussion? Can you have a discussion? Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have a motion carry.
No, I'm opposed.
Are you opposed? Okay, one opposed.
Yes.
Thank you, Miss Lisa. All right. Uh, at this time, we are only taking public comments on non-agenda items. I would like to again remind the public of our public uh comment policy for our board policy. Any person may address the board in accordance with the procedures and limitations of the policy, either on issues presented or resolutions being considered or on other matters affecting the administration, administration, management or operations of the district. Remarks of a personal nature to direct it against any individual will be ruled out ruled out of order. Once recognized, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and kindly limit your remarks to three minutes. Ms. Secretary, do we have any comment?
No, we do not have any public comment on non-agenda items.
All right. Um, any old business? Any new business? May I have a uh motion to adjourn?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I'll see dismissed to the next one.
I'd like to call to order the Education Committee of the whole for the Board of Directors of the School District for the City of Allentown for today, May eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Um, I'm not going to reread the public comment um protocols. Madam Secretary, do we have any um public comment on agenda items? We have no public comment on agenda items. Thank you very much. Um, Superintendent Brooks.
Thank you, Ms. Will. Tonight's Education Committee of the whole agenda contains four items for your consideration. The first item is approval of an agreement to continue with Renaissance Star to provide district-wide assessments in English language arts and mathematics. The agreement includes professional development and project management support to ensure we continue to build the capacity of our team. Second item is approval of our continuation with chalk curriculum mapping software. The board first approved this software system in twenty twenty-two as part of supporting the district's curriculum review and development cycle. The system has been used by members of the curriculum department to map and build curriculum using the understanding by design format. Chalk provides a platform for creating one space for our curriculum to be captured and make available for all of our teachers. The third item is a renewal of our agreement to provide Go Math curriculum materials in grades K to five. We are currently using Go Math in the elementary grade levels, and this purchase will sustain the program for one more year. While professional development is provided for teachers and curriculum planning is completed to identify new resources in twenty twenty-four. The final item is approval of the twenty twenty-three Carbonly High Intermediate Unit, Unit Twenty-One Facilities Plan. This is the annual approval of the plan that has been approved by the Carbonly High Intermediate Unit Board of Directors. Ms. Will.
Thank you very much. Thank you for reviewing the agenda items. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Roth and Dr. Flojo to the podium to present regarding Renaissance Star.
Thank you, Ms. Will. Thank you, Dr. Burks. Uh, good evening, board members. Um, this evening, I'd also like to thank um uh Ms. McGwin, who is our supervisor of instruction um at William Allen High School and Principal Bobner, who is also here tonight um in support of these um annual renewals that we are bringing forward to you. Um, this evening for Renaissance Star, we request the board's approval to renew the Renaissance Star Reading and Math Assessment System, Project Management, and Champions Academy to support student data analysis and responsive instructional planning based on a data on data at a total cost of two hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred, one dollars and fifty cents for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Um, we did share a presentation with the board, um, which gave you some additional information and context um for those uh for those approvals. Of course, we always want to start remind that um all of our uh learning community that all our decisions are really grounded in our our mission and our vision of what we want to um accomplish for our students um through the use of these resources. And of course, if you go to the next slide, please, um, the uh core values which we hold um very dear and we put into practice every day, especially as we review these materials, resources, and before we bring them to the board for your consideration. The next slide, please. So this evening, we are um reviewing Star Renaissance, the chalk curriculum platform and the Go Math as uh Dr. Burks did uh indicate. Next slide, please. So Star Renaissance, Star Renaissance, um, yeah, this request actually enables the district to continue our district-wide cohesive assessment system in reading and math that includes benchmark and progress monitoring. Um, as as you've been aware, as we are getting better at our practices and procedures around data from a district-wide perspective, leading up to the the presentation similar to the one that I did in February, we were going to be coming back to you with those uh additional presentations showing the the ultimate data from um, I shouldn't say ultimate data, but the data that ultimately we get from the state in terms of PSSAs and keystones. Um, Star Renaissance is one of the indicators that we use to help uh track the progress of our students um as they are moving through our curriculum and through our instruction. The STAR assessments are standards-aligned, computer-adapted reading and math assessments that are implemented in grades one through eleven in both math and and reading. The um Allentown School District did um purchase the initial system back in two thousand and eighteen um and expanded it in two thousand and nineteen. In this particular agreement, we're also looking to continue with a project manager who oversees the um effective implementation of STAR, and that's a not an individual that's hired by the district. It comes through um through STAR. And then also um adding this Champions Academy, which is a train-the-trainer approach in which we will have um a cohort of up to thirty people who will be uh trained in the reports and the uh systems that are in STAR so that we can become even better and more effective uh in its use to inform our instruction of our teachers um and inform the schools of what's happening in their schools. And then also looking at it from a perspective of what that means for us as we evaluate and look at uh curriculum and instruction across the district. Um, I do know I'm getting feedback from um some of the the individuals from our learning community who sit in on these data, the data meetings that are held at the building level, that this this does help to um inform them in terms of how they do small group instruction, how they do intervention, how they uh align groups and so forth. Um, our buildings use our schools use it as part of their budget presentations to show where their goals were and whether or not they were on on track to meet their goals um for the end of this year. And then from a a perspective of building wide, we use it to to gauge, right, especially through comprehensive school improvement um and the other um uh processes and plans that we have to go through, whether or not we're making the progress that we need to be making. Any questions on STAR?
Yes. So I was gonna ask you for data. You mentioned it. I was gonna ask you because it's all about reading and math, and I kind of wanted to know how has it been progressing as we've been utilizing this program?
So that um I I will speak to it to a certain part, and then I may ask Ms. McGwin to come on up and Principal Bodnar as well. So um from my perspective, from a district-level perspective, as I've sat in uh on on meetings where we've looked at how are we doing as a district perspective, right? It gives us insight as to how our students are progressing in math, right? How they are progressing in terms of reading. Um, we do the various benchmarks. We'll have the last benchmarks. I'll be able to tell you specifically how we how we have progressed and how we've done. There are areas where we are improving. There are areas where we're stagnant. There's areas where we need to increase our growth, right? Again, one of the things about STAR is that, and the team can correct me if I'm wrong, it is an adaptive um type of of assessment, right? So it is standards aligned, but it also, as they go through, it adapts to how the students are performing so that it's not necessarily going to give us a a direct correlation to PSA, PSSA standard performance, but it's going to tell us how our students are progressing as they compare to cohort groups within the system.
Okay.
So it's like an individualized.
It it does, right? It individualized, but then you can get group reports as well, right? And you can pull those types of things out.
Okay.
Ms. McGwin?
Good evening. I'm going to um just discuss how in real time, when the supervisors of instruction uh do walkthroughs and observation, the impact STAR has had in um the classroom. The first thing we did uh was look at the standards and how the standards are you know, utilized in Keystone as well as STAR. You already know that they reflect each other. And what we had this uh teachers do this year is look at the standards and as grade level and determine which ones would give them the most bang for their buck to um commit to and use in the classrooms. And um one of the writers of Power Standards, Larry Ainsworth, said that it gives us the most, like I said, the most bang for our buck, and it helps us utilize and develop strategies specifically to help students. And I'll give you some examples. And I posed the question, how did STAR Power Standards help teachers this year? It helped them with strategic lesson planning, improved development of questions, increased checking for students' understanding, and moved the teachers away from um lecture to more student engagement. And then how did this impact our students? More students engaged in academic conversations with classmates, whether it was math, science, or literacy. More students citing evidence from text, video, math problems, whether verbally or in writing. More student engagement and independent practice or helping each other versus depending on the teacher. And then what does this mean for our school district? Number one, increased number and percentage of students who are at or above STAR benchmarks. Number two, increased number and percentage of students who demonstrate proficiency and advanced proficiency on Keystone. Three, increased number of students who take AP courses. And the last one, increased number and percentage of students who are college career ready by twelfth grade. And last but not least, I hope we keep STAR and conduct our own study as this um school district of Philadelphia has done in the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Um, they assessed to see the relationship between STAR as well as Keystone. And I'll just cite two findings they uh came up with. Uh, finding number one, above about ninety percent of students who scored high in STAR reading also perform proficient or advanced proficient on Keystone. And the second one, about seventy percent of students who scored high in STAR math also perform proficient or advanced proficient on the Algebra One and Keystone exam. So I'm hoping that we would conduct our own study as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. And I'm I'm happy that you mentioned assessment because that's I like to hear that. I I believe when we're doing these programs, especially when it comes to reading and math, we have to do assessment to see is it working? Maybe it's only working for certain students in certain grade levels and certain students it's not working for. So I like the fact that you mentioned that we should do an assessment on that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, I have one more question, then I'm done, I promise. I noticed that um that we designated, we're using ESSR funds to fund this. If this is a program that is gonna be working and we're out of ESSR funds in a year, how are we planning to keep this going? I want us to be more forward-thinking when it comes to that because if it is working, I don't want us to have to get rid of it.
Missy, would you like to submit? Thank you.
So I have a comment. Um, I I think the STAR assessments are good. Um, the only problem I really have is that it's a timed assessment. So any little distraction can change the score. It could be something as simple as a kid dropping a pencil. And then that distracts the entire class and it it could bring down the scores. Um, or for example, kids with ADHD, they can't focus on this stuff. Um, any little distraction that can affect their scores. Or if they're doing something to distract the rest of the class, then that affects the stores, the the scores of the whole class. So that would be the only thing I would say, like, if if they're just timed, and I feel like that that's that's a problem, and that could be bringing down some of our scores.
Thank you. Um, to go back to the first question with the ESSR funding, and then I'll allow Ms. Bodnar to talk a little bit about how um Central is handling STAR within the elementary level and possibly um using different testing strategies for their students. But ESSRS, you are absolutely correct. ESSRS is ending, but as we continue to evaluate programming, um, the ones that we find that are absolutely essential for us to move our stu- to increase student outcomes, we will be sharing those with you and including them in the learning and teaching budgets as we build in our budgets moving forward. Ms. Bodnar?
Thanks, Missy. To speak on the part of uh what we do at the elementary level, so there are a couple accommodations that we can make when the students are taking the STAR um benchmark. So benchmark is four times a year. Um, you can chunk the test for the students. You can also access the different accommodations that are in STAR um for math and also for reading. There's a highlighter option. Um, you can have the test questions read aloud to you, but that's something that we try and do systematically, so it's the same across all the elementary schools. Uh, for us, it's really a data um correlation tool that we like to use. So there's the quarterly STAR benchmark assessments, and then we also break it down to the progress monitoring. So after the first STAR benchmark, we take a look at the students um that are not progressing as we think that they should, and then we break them into um smaller groups, which we will then progress monitor. So the progress monitoring assessment is actually a little bit shorter than the benchmark. Um, so it's not as tedious and time-consuming as what the benchmark is, and that really helps us take a look and monitor the students throughout the year. So we're not waiting just for those assessment assessments to come up four times a year. Um, it is a really nice tool as well, um, especially for us. We we really enjoy it for reading because we have all these different assessment and data points that we're looking at. And STAR is the one that really helps us um see if everything is uh aligned throughout and and see where our students should be placed, but it also helps us um gauge their growth over the course of the year. Um, so at the elementary level, we really do appreciate having STAR as that assessment measure that we can use to track students' progress.
Thank you, Ms. Bodnar. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
I make the motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Want to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion to move forward to May twenty-fifth.
Next up, I apologize, I pulled up on the other agenda.
Thank you. Dr. Flojo.
The floor is yours.
Yeah.
Good evening. Um, I'm here this evening to request um the approval, the board's approval for the renewal of the purchase of the chalk curriculum mapping software at the cost of forty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. The chalk software has helped us met the two recommendations from the curriculum audit from two thousand and eighteen, and that is recommendation three to ensure the clarity through consistent district planning and recommendation four to develop and implement a comprehensive curriculum management system to provide district-wide design, delivery, monitoring, and evaluation of curriculum. Chalk provides us with the opportunity to have a digital platform that is accessible twenty-four seven. Whether teachers are home, administrators are home or in school, they replace the old binders that we had. Chalk has the ability Chalk has the ability to have components shared to, with our community. Once our curriculum is published and we are on track to publish, our parents and our community will be able to check out our website and look at the pacing guides of our curriculum as written. Curriculum maps are centralized, easily accessible to all staff, principals, and teachers, as I mentioned before. It also helps us see vertical and horizontal alignment. And what I mean by that is third grade at Central can see third grade at Jefferson. So we know that our students are getting the same across the board. Also, second grade teachers can see what's going to happen in third grade. Third grade teachers can see what's going to happen in fourth grade. And conversely, look back and see what their second graders had last year. So we provide consistency there. One of my favorite things about this platform, and I have some comments, I don't have live testimony, but I have some comments from teachers, is that it provides collaboration. We've seen this year with our classroom teachers and our curriculum writers, they were able to share the experience. And classroom teachers were able to give feedback immediately during the writing process. So this has been really great for our teachers. Chalk provides an easy-to-use and accessible platform for curriculum writers to develop curricula that demonstrates a clear alignment, high quality, and assessments rooted in understanding by design. It further allows us to provide teachers with an easy-to-navigate curriculum that guides and supports rigorous instruction. It allows for teacher collaboration, and that was from one of our social studies teachers. So we are really excited that the teachers like the platform as well. Currently, we have our Stage 1 for Math, ELA, Social Studies, and World Languages on the Chalk platform. More than 50 of our teachers and administrators have been engaged with this platform. It's easy to use and it's easy to customize. I think that was the last slide. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a motion to move the Chalk mapping forward to the regular board meeting on Thursday, May 25th. Um, Santana, is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Harris, there is a second on the motion. I would just like to make a comment and say that, you know, we have a lot of mobility in our district. And sometimes over the years, I, you know, kids in Newburgh are at one place and kids at Central are at another. So this is just giving them a more level playing field, moving forward to make sure that we're all on the same page. And they're residing at any point through the school year. So thank you very much for that. All in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed?
The I's have it. This moves forward to the regular board meeting on May 25th. The third item is the MOU for the math curriculum materials. Dr. Roth?
Thank you, Ms. Will. This evening, we request the board's approval to renew for the 2023-24 school year, the Go Math Consumable Books in Digital Access from Houghton Mifflin Hardcore, HMH, to support K-5 math curriculum instruction and assessment at a total cost of $172,816.80. The HMH Go Math, K-5, I've been checking my history. I believe we've been using it in the district for approximately seven years. There was a pilot that was done, the materials were selected, and the district has been using it, has been using it ever since. We're requesting the approval to do this one more year as we bridge and start identifying new resources and new materials that will be a part of this curriculum review and development process that we are, that we are currently engaged in. What this includes is the student edition, print and online interactive versions, and also the teacher editions for anyone who needs those. It is designed using the proven 5E instructional model. It's designed around the Common Core Math, and then there are Common Core standards for math, which are the nationwide standards, but then also it's adapted and has the resources that are necessary for PA Core Math standards as well. Next slide. So the curriculum resources, of course, will provide the opportunities for our students. You know, I will tell you that I go back and forth between traditional art, you know, consumable, have it in your hand, and also the online versions as well. But sometimes we have to meet our learners where there are. And one of the things that's positive about when you have those online interactive modules that are a part of a curriculum program, students can access it anytime, anywhere. And that there are, you know, there are games and engagement activities and so forth that can be a part of the program that again, help to enhance the learning for our students. Any questions?
I have a question. Are you going to be, after this one year, are we going to be looking or planning to switch math programs? Just because I feel like the lessons, they don't, they're not in order. And I've looked at some of the books that Gianna brought home, and the lessons just don't, they don't appear to be in order to me. So this is just for one year, correct?
That is correct. You are absolutely correct and on point. So one of the things that Mr. Kaufman is working on currently with our teachers is identifying professional development that talks about some of the shifts that need to happen in terms of mathematics instruction, going into, you know, going into that performance data that we've been talking about to find out the areas where our students are having success or where they're not having success in math performance and what we need to do. And then going through the process of identifying new materials and resources that will better align to what we need to be doing in terms of, in terms of mathematics instruction.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Um, I guess question, comment? I had the same question Ms. Ortiz had. I'm not sold on another year because these kids are really failing when it comes to math. And if this is what we're giving them, especially when it comes to K through 5, that's, those are the most important years where we're building the fundamentals there. And when they move from there, that's where the issues come in middle school and high school. So is there another, Dr. Burks, is there another program that we're looking into that?
Dr. Roth.
Both, yeah.
Can you explain the RFP process and why we're undergoing this for just very reason? I thank you for bringing that to the public's attention, Ms. Brownwell, as well as Ms. Ortiz.
Yes, absolutely. So we currently have RFPs out for curriculum and materials, K-5, K-8, math, science, reading, English language arts, because we want to put abroad. We've designed the RFPs based upon the needs that we have identified that need to be addressed as part of what needs to be happening in terms of curriculum. So those have gone out. And so we're receiving those back so that we can start identifying the areas and materials and resources that are going to better serve, you know, better serve our teachers, better serve our students. We are also, you know, as I said before, engaging in a lot of professional development around what needs to be happening in terms of those instructional shifts that need to occur. But in addition to that, as you recall, as part of the central office transformation, we've actually identified a new role, which is the Director of Math, right? So that we can have an individual who can dive into this work and lead this workforce from a district-wide perspective.
Thank you.
Can you expound on the RFP process and just so that the board will have an understanding as well as the community? And, you know, as part of my transition here as superintendent, I talked about what's the return on many of these initiatives as well as programs that we've been implementing for quite some time, and we look in the correlation between whether outcomes will be improved. And so we want to also have, and if you can talk about the process, it would be helpful, Dr. Roth, in terms of the club engagement and how we're going to bring in.
Certainly. Yes, thank you, Dr. Burke. So we currently have, again, we have those RFPs out for curriculum materials, and we're going to be putting more out for professional development as well and other systems that will help to support us in what needs to happen holistically across the district to improve our curriculum and our practices. What the process will look like is once we receive those RFPs, we have rubrics that we've designed that are specific to the RFPs that went out. So we'll see how those proposals come back. We'll evaluate those. We're working with teams right now to identify who's going to be evaluating which portions of the RFP because there's certain expertise that needs to be had to identify the proposals as they come back. And then from that, we are going to narrow the field from the number of RFPs that we get to a smaller number to bring those to our teachers and to our principals, for them to take a look at it, provide feedback, narrow the field down to one or two, right? To then, we're currently in works of having a, establishing a community curriculum fair where we actually would like to bring these resources out and put them on display for our community, for our board members, for teachers, for anyone who has an interest, right? To come and take a look at these materials and resources that we've narrowed down in the field to give us feedback about what they see in terms of the process. I'm really excited about it because it's something, I've considered myself a little bit of a curriculum nerd. I really love this process. I love all that needs to be put apart as part of this. And I've never, I've never been a part of something where we've designed or thought about doing something that broadly, right? To be able to get that level of engagement.
Well, I'm nerding out with you. Y'all know, everybody knows I'm into history and everything else, but that curriculum, I'm sad that it's taken us so long to get to that point, but I'm just glad that we now, thank you Superintendent, have a plan. Because that's something, you know, our curriculum, it was never, well, since I've been on the board, standardized whatsoever. And now we're bringing it to a standard, and it's going to be a platinum standard. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Roth. Any other questions? And I have a motion to move this curriculum forward to the regular board meeting on May 25th.
I make that motion?
Ms. Harris, is there a second?
A second.
Ms. Noel Brown? Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, this moves forward to the regular board meeting on Thursday, May 25th. That brings us to the fourth item, the MOU for the Carbon Lehigh Intermediate Unit Facilities Plan. Mr. Sickett?
Good evening. We're requesting the board's approval of the facilities plan for the Carbon Lehigh Intermediate Unit. This action item recommends, has recommendations for the 23-24 school year. The attached plan describes the changes that will be taking place in Carbon and Lehigh counties for any of our special education students. Within the changes for the upcoming year, this has no impact on ASD students whatsoever. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to move this forward to the regular board meeting on Thursday, May 25th? Dr. Santana, is there a second?
I second.
Ms. Noel Brown, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
I'm going to go along with this one. I particularly don't like the IU. I don't. But since it is our special ed and that is, we have to do this, I will go along with it.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The I's have it. This moves forward to the May 25th meeting. Madam Secretary, are there any comment cards?
There are no comment cards.
Thank you very much. Is there any old business to come before this committee? Is there any new business?
Yes, I have a quick question. In regards to Carbon Lehigh, I think part of the disconnect is the fact that no one is assigned to be on that board yet to be able to report what's actually happening there. And I feel like that could be a part of the disconnect. And I'm wondering, you know, I think I volunteered for a few weeks, but I don't know if I'm there right now, but. Okay, we'll talk about it after. We'll talk about it after. But I do think that's a part of the disconnect. I think, you know, we don't really have a report of like what's actually happening there, to be fair to them. Yeah.
Agreed. Was that Ms. Ortiz, did you have a comment or an old, new business?
I had old business.
No, I didn't.
I didn't. I heard a voice, but I wasn't sure which one. Go ahead, Ms. Conover.
So I wanted to talk about, or find out if there's any updates or, I wanted to talk about early college and dual enrollment. How many, you know, what direction are we going in? Because we're here, I want to hear about our, we worked really hard to get this early college. And I know last, when we were in a meeting, public meeting, it was mentioned that, I think it was a Century Promise, I don't know, Ms. Harris is not there now, but I just want to know what's the status with it. Are we going, are we going forward or are we going backwards?
Dr. Burke?
Dr. Roth, please.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Conover. So we currently, I believe it is 27 students who are part of the current cohort that will graduate this year. And there are 43 who are a part of Cohort 4. I did have a conversation with LTRIC recently, and in terms of Cohort 5, they have funding for 25 students. That's what they have been able to secure in terms of the grants and resources that they have available.
So our initial funding from, from the, for early college, wasn't that coming from, from Lee Butts or Century 21, some sunsetting or whatever? Can we talk about that?
It was the Century Fund, which is different than the Century Promise. The Century Fund, when they were sunsetting and had to spend their allocation of money that they had, one of the things that they committed to doing was funding the early college cohort for, I don't remember the X number of years, but that, so that was, that was the Century Fund that provided that funding.
And that came out when Mr. Thomas, Mr. Parker was here. And I remember when they were talking about that this was something, I think our first class, we had like 60, I think, initially, and I think 50 went forward. But I haven't gotten a report or I haven't heard anything. And I'm kind of concerned because I was looking for the district to do like a commercial for its graduates and people who came out and were successful, but I haven't seen anything that's talking about our, the successes of our students in the early college. And I definitely, you know, you know, here it is. How, this is, this is the third, right? You said the third class?
Yes, that's correct. Cohort 3.
And it's going down. Because we can't find funding, and we talked about funding before. That was supposed to be funded. I have some concerns.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
So I said to, actually, I'm glad you're bringing this up because as a dip, we have a strong commitment to early college. Students, and in my conversations with Dr. Roth and Ms. Smith, that I said that we should find any student who want to participate and meet whatever requirements that have been set, that we should find resources internally to fund those efforts. And they've been given that charge last week. And there is some type of ceremony, and I'm still learning the district, but there is a culminating activity for early college students. And if Dr. Roth, if you could please speak to that.
Yes, so on, you should have received an invitation today for June 7th. Up at the LTRIC Snacksville Campus in their Community Services Center, we will be holding a recognition and a celebration of our Cohort 3 graduates on, again, June 7th from 4:00 to 5:30 PM. And we will, we will recognize them. We'll have, LTRIC is trying to identify some of the students who would like to speak as part of that celebration. And again, we hope that people can come out and help celebrate and recognize those individuals who are part of Cohort 3.
Okay, so that means.
Well, let me, what, wait.
Go ahead, Ms. Conover.
Okay. So that's good, Dr. Roth. But this is what I want the board members to understand. Again, I'm going back to 2017 when we came on this board, we were told we fought for our kids. We had a couple of kids that was in district that was doing dual enrollment, but I don't know who was paying. I don't know if it was their parents or if it was just, that's a choice few. We were told that it couldn't happen, and we pushed, we pushed, and we pushed, and we got it. And then when they, they sold it to us, just like we're sitting here tonight and we're going over a lot of wonderful things, Dr. Burke, that you're bringing forth in this district, right? And we were happy. And I'm, and this is just my second term, and I'm not hearing anything. So I get concerned, and I'm seeing the numbers go down, and I'm hearing, oh, something. And I'm hearing something that I said I didn't want to hear before. We gotta look for money. There was money there for that. And we're talking about our kids. These are the same kids. Same kids, right? What goes in is what comes out. They, they show up in the newspaper, talking about guns in the schools and stuff like that, right? We have to sow into these kids. And if we're not, you know, I have a problem with that. I wanted, I wanted to hear that we had a hundred students going. And, and, and 2018, I think it was, we had that, that curriculum audit. And our ninth graders, which we've already graduated, they were grossly, um, behind. You know, and so now we're not, you know, I, listen, I'm just saying, I'm not forgetting, I'm here on this board for a reason. So we have to find out, Mrs. Harris, um, board members, what happened? Where is it? Where, what, why is it that we're looking for something that was already supposed to be spoken for? For our students in early college?
You're correct, Lisa.
Why?
Dr. Burks, would you like to address that?
Yes. So, um, Ms. Conover, and I just want to make sure, I know I, um, I stated that I want us to find resources. However, I didn't mean that, I didn't, I want to make sure it wasn't misconstrued. What I was saying is that we have resources that can support early college based on various funding that we have as an organization already. So I don't want you to think that we're looking for it, but we have to have it available to ensure that we are providing these early learning opportunities for our students. I'd like to build upon that. I've been stretching my team because I agree with you, 20 is unacceptable, 25 or whatever the number is. And given the number of institutions that are in this area, we should have college, early college everywhere. All the universities and colleges in this area. And we have been begun to have, and me personally, have started the conversations with the institutions around us about expanding our work. And for the first time, even we have this, um, partnership with Moravian. And I want to thank, and I have to say this publicly, um, I sent text messages to the board, board members, school board directors, and you responded with that Moravian project. They shared with us and Dr. Roth, do you have those numbers handed? Last year, we had one person, child participate um, in this partnership, Moravian with boys of color. And this year, I know, um, Dr. Ra- um, Mr. Buck and Dr. Robinson, of course, the board members and I know Ms., um, Phoebe had a huge response with the young men that she's working with. And they told us, we exceed, we surpassed their expectations. They were like, wow. We, they, they have to now add an additional cohort of providing early learning experiences for young men of color at Moravian. I'm pushing, I have a email out to the director who is sponsoring that and I want him to build on that program, even we have to support it um, financially to once a month. I mean, because one shot says great, but we know in terms of sustainability and impact, it's not going to have the significant impact that we know that our young men need. So I, you, I'm with you, Ms. Conover. We need to do a lot better and we will do a lot better.
So do we, do we only have 20 students or whatever the number was, I forgot? Um, is it lack of interest or lack of, um?
Dr. Santana?
Information.
It's not lack of interest. We're not recruiting them like we did before. When we first started this, I know, because this, this was something that Lisa, myself, and I saw in a charter school at their graduation, that they were graduating children with, you know, enough credits to start as a junior, 60 credits. We said, why aren't we doing that? I'm still trying to figure out why we're not, why we're not having it at our schools, because they have it at their schools, but I'm gonna let that go for right now.
Well, I'll say this, I'll say this, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna speak of my experience. When I got on the board, I knew that there were students that were in other, um, school districts that were attending college, okay? When we first approached this board, it was like impossible. Our kids can't do that. And I always said from day one, and I'm going to say it today, what goes in is what comes out. Okay, here we are, four years later after graduating those ninth graders. There's no reason why we shouldn't have every position that's offered at LTRIC at least filled. Okay, there's no reason that we shouldn't have that. There's no reason, if you, I'm sitting here and I'm looking at the boardroom from, from a virtual standpoint. And I see all those graduates around the dais. Our schools should be lined with those early graduates. The people that they went to school with, seeing them graduate and seeing that they can attain that. And when you tell me, we don't need a million dollars to do that, that's something that was not done. And you tell me at the third, coming up on the third or fourth class, that we only have 20 some students, I have a problem with it.
My heart breaks.
But we want to keep building buildings in schools, which we need them. But are we, it's about our kids. Now, I know there was money, I saw the, 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 um, you remember too? Um, I think Mrs. Watts was on, it was, I know she was on the board back then. We asked those questions. What is going to happen tomorrow? Today is tomorrow. And now we're sitting here trying to figure out why our kids are not, why those positions are not filled and our kids are not in that, in that school. Needless to talk about those kids that came back and said that they weren't prepared, kids that went to college and said, uh, I didn't have this, I didn't have that. I had three students return to my house this week saying to me, Ms. Conover, I want to become a realtor. Because they feel like they can't, they, they ready to, to drop out of school. That's not on, on them, it's on us. And so I'm not talking at my board, I'm saying, come on, we gotta do, we have, this is what we're here for. If we're not teaching these kids math and reading, we're setting them up to fail. I don't care how many skills. And even if you start, you know, people say, oh, kids don't want to go to college, you know, they can go to the school. If they can't add and they can't read, they're not going to make it there either. And it doesn't matter how many pathways we give them out of the district, you know, and to graduate. Once they get out there, they're going to be on their own and they're not going to be prepared. And that's, I mean, I know you guys are probably tired of hearing me, but you're going to keep hearing me until we do something about it. What about our middle school and our high schoolers? How about that? I'm gonna keep saying it. I'm looking for those outcomes. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was just saying, thank you.
And Ms. Conover, I'm gonna agree with you because I had a student that came here with middle school, through 12th grade. Couldn't get through college. His first year, couldn't do it. You know, now he's probably going to Lincoln Tech for medical assistant, but that's, you know, he's 21 years old. System didn't do too well for my son. That's why we fight and that's why we're trying to figure out why, you know, no one has recruited enough students. Because before we was, you know, we were so happy with our students, it was going forward, it had momentum and now it's gone.
So who's in charge of the recruitment process?
I want to know that too. Yeah, who's, and who's in charge of recruiting our students for this? Do we have some?
Well, that's not a fair question because again, that goes back to me making a statement about, you know, we change these guards every time you turn around, somebody's getting a new position or getting thrown out or leaving. So we don't really know who that is. The bottom line is who's going to take the initiative to make sure that those positions are filled and those kids are prepared to graduate college and career ready?
But that's why we're asking the question, Ms. Cono, because if we don't know who's in charge, then we can't set the standards and report back to them about how we're feeling about it. So we do need to know like who is in charge of, of recruitment.
I understand that. And I wish I could answer that question, but I, what I'm saying to you. I'm sorry.
It's a collective responsibility with all the educators to make sure we afford students with opportunities to build their skill sets and so that they can be successful in school and life and beyond. However, this is primary function at the, at the middle and high school level of school administration and school counselors. So however, this is why in our central office transformational plan, we suggested that we hire a Director of Student Services, so that person's pri- we can hold, I'm sorry, early college awareness, so that person will be solely responsible for these types of efforts. Because I agree with everything you said, um, Ms. Conover. We need to provide multiple opportunities and pathways for students to be successful. Even having, um, deeper relationships, even with some of our, in addition to LTCI, there are other post-secondary options out there that our students, that many of them make more than most of us. And they didn't go on and invest, you know, a hundred and $200,000 in getting college education. And so, but with that said, it is our collective responsibility, but primary, once we hired a Director of College and Career readiness, that person will work with our school counselors and the teams at the school level and will build better pathways even to prepare students for college-going, college courses at the middle school level. We need to start there. There's various initiatives like Abbott and others that we need to build a college-going culture and not just college, but post-secondary culture within our district. And we haven't have that in true transparency, not to blame anyone, we haven't accreted that yet. You know, we say it.
Yeah. All right, I understand that. But now my heart hurts. I'm devastated by this. You know, we were the only school district, public school district in the state of Pennsylvania. Only college. The only one. You know, Allen Town's known for many things. But that was a good one. And we, I'm sorry, y'all, I can't let y'all, I can't let y'all get away with this. I can't. This was an opportunity, this is an opportunity, and we only have 20 something students. Out of, we're supposed to have at least 60, and by now, we should have had a hundred. My heart hurts. I hear Lisa's frustration. I, I don't know what to say with that one. I don't know what to say. I'm hurting because we're, but, you know, hurting so hard for these students. And to see this program go by the wayside because we didn't have somebody recruiting or, you know, it was a mix-up somewhere or it just didn't happen. It makes me feel like we did five steps forward and seven steps back. Y'all do something. I, I can't, I can't, I'm hurting. And I need something done to recruit more students for this time, for this, you know. I, I need at least 60 students. We need at least 60 students. First, we're giving our students hope and then we take it back. We give them hope because the hope is the foundation for the American dream. Without the hope, we can't have the dream. I know we have 99 problems. I know that our school district has its own set of problems. But that one was the joy.
Ms. Harris, point taken. I, through the discussion, I heard a request of the administration, um, to do everything possible to recruit more people, more young people to this program. I don't disagree with anything that you have said or Mrs. Conover has said. It's, it's a phenomenal program. Um, and we should be proud of that. So if you, Dr. Burks, could step up that, that effort and then if you could just, um, as you are recruiting, give us updates on where we're at so that the board knows, um, where we are with the progress, I would greatly appreciate that.
Yes, we will. And the administration is committed to making sure that we provide these opportunities for students. And I feel really sad myself to that, um, students haven't been given that opportunity.
Thank you very much. On that note, may I have a motion to adjourn the Education Committee? Dr. Santana, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr., um, it's Andrea Brown and Ms. Conover. Um, all in favor of adjourning the Education Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That brings us to the Finance Committee of the whole meeting for the Board of Directors for the City of Valentine for today, May 11. Again, not going to read the, um, protocols. Do we have any comment cards?
There are no comment cards.
That brings us to our first order of business, which I believe is a presentation, uh, of the PFM five-year projection. Mr. Linderman? And associate.
Thank you, Mr. Linderman. And, uh, thank you for having us here today. I'm Dean Kaplan from Public Financial Management and, uh, it's advertised that I'm joined by Ian Tyson, who is at home on baby watch tonight. Uh, I'm joined by Soraya Louison, who is one of our colleagues who's worked extensively on, uh, our work with, uh, with the district and has presented here before. So we're both delighted to, to be here. And we're following up on, uh, uh, prior series of, uh, budget presentations over the past several years. Uh, we've been working most recently with, uh, Ms. Ramos, Mr. Lindeman and Mr. Fazio, uh, to provide some information to the board in advance of the, uh, 23, 24 uh, budget for the district and also the state's, uh, budget, uh, for next year. So we're going to spend a little time, uh, tonight just going through, uh, the, our projection. It's a multi-year financial projection. Uh, Soraya will explain sort of how we came to that. And then we'll talk a little bit about some of the, uh, cost drivers across the budget. And then come back with some alternative scenarios that show, um, uh, different assumptions. And usually when we do this, it's important to remind everyone that, uh, we're looking at projections, not predictions. Uh, we're trying to, uh, stress test different ideas, uh, in what will happen over the next several years. And of course, it's always different from exactly what you, you think might happen. Um, and the goal here is to provide information, uh, that will allow the board to be informed and ask questions and take actions going forward to, to keep the budget, um, in balance and fund the programs for, for kids, which obviously, especially given the last, uh, conversation, is why we're all here. So with that, I will hand it off to Soraya.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I hope you can hear me, I'm a little short. Um, we'll be starting tonight with a review of the 23, 24 budget. As you can see at the top, it's a 464.5 million budget, both on the revenue and expenditure side. A major driver for the revenues is state education funding, which accounts for almost 50% of the revenue budget in the 23, 24 school year. Additionally, local sources account for the second largest portion, um, about 27%. Most of that is coming out of the real estate taxes. On our general expenditure, fund expenditure side, we see about 60% of your expenditures are coming from salaries and benefits. With an additional portion, the second largest portion being driven by charter tuition. And our local sac- tax, local sources will first review real estate taxes. Our assumptions around real estate taxes is assuming that assessed value is growing by almost half a percent, 26% in 23, 24, based on historical trends that the district has seen. We're keeping the collection rate flat, we're keeping property tax reduction flat. And we're also keeping our tax rate flat. And those are the only assumptions we're making around real estate taxes in terms of growth. Next, we'll be talking about earned income tax. So we're seeing an increase of about to 12 million in 24, 25 based on an analysis of the revenue collection data. After that, we're growing it by 2.5% our CPI growth rate. All other local taxes are being held flat at the 23, 24 budgeted amounts. For state subsidies, we're looking at basic education funding and special education. For our 23, 24 numbers, we're assuming that the district will be seeing historical dr- growth that we've seen in BF and SEF. So that's approximately 100 million annual increase. And, and BF and approximately 35 million annual increase in SEF. We're not assuming any increases based on the governor's proposal at this time and in this scenario. We're assuming that level up will be, will go into the base on 23, 24, and we're assuming no other additional funds to level up after that. So after 24, 25 and on throughout the projection. Transportation, transportation subsidies will be held flat. And we're assuming for social, social security and peace service reimbursements that they'll be based on the rates published by the Commonwealth. For our federal revenues, as you all know, and you mentioned earlier this evening, you have one-time ESER funds that are being included in the 23, 24 budget. And there's an additional 1 million being included in the 24, 25 projections, and all ESER funds are removed after those years. We're keeping our QSCB and QZAB subsidies rates based on the district's current debt service schedule. And all remaining federal funds are held flat at the 23, 24 budgeted amounts. For federal expenditures, as briefly mentioned, there are one-time ESER funds in the 23, 24 budget. Some of these funds will remain in the budget after the revenue has been removed. So you'll see that in the second bullet, we talk about, about 10 million being removed from. So you'll see that in the second bullet, we talk about about ten million being removed from salaries and thirty million being removed from building projects as one-time funds, but other areas will be continued after the budget. Again, there is one million in ESSER costs that are included in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget to represent the final year of summer programs covered by those one-time grants. All other federal costs are grown at the slides that I will go into deeper detail then. We're assuming that salaries are growing by an aggregated four point four percent based on the district's current agreements with their teachers and many other contracts. As you guys discussed tonight, there was a vote on the contract covering four years from twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-six, twenty-seven. Our projections assume there are no changes to headcount. And we're assuming a two percent vacancy allowance to show the financial impact of normal staff turnover and hiring timelines. Our budgets, our projections assume a five point six percent growth rate for healthcare spending based on the district's historical trends. The district is anticipating some healthcare savings in their most recent contracts, but a lot of districts are seeing increased costs around this area. Some districts are seeing about fifteen percent increases in the next school year. So this is an area that the district will like to, will likely have to focus on in the next few years. Other employee benefits are being grown based on peace service rates that we've already established. Charter school tuition, we're assuming that enrollment will increase at about three hundred and fifty students annually. We'll go into further details later on in further slides about other assumptions we're making around charter tuition and what could possibly go on in that area. Similarly, with transportation, we're assuming about five point five percent increase based on historical trends. But there are some additional areas that we'd like you guys to think about that we'll discuss in further slides. Our debt service assumptions are based on the district's current debt service schedule provided by our financial advisors along with PFM. We're not assuming any additional borrowing for buildings or capital projects in this current projection. All other non-personnel expenditures are grown by an inflationary rate based on the survey of professional forecasters published by the Philadelphia Federal Reserve Bank. That is a three point seven five percent increase in twenty-four, twenty-five and two point five percent in all other years. Library tax transfers, as you see at the bottom, are grown based on changes on the assessed value. And it's adjusted in the tax scenarios that we'll go into further details about later on. As you can see in our updated baseline multi-year projection, this all encompasses the assumptions that I've talked about before. So that's that four percent increase to salaries. It's the five point six percent in healthcare. It's the two percent vacancy rate in all those other areas we've discussed. You'll see that the district starts to have a negative operating result in twenty-four, twenty-five. That continues to grow through the end of the projections. The district also exhausts all of their fund balance by twenty-five, twenty-six, which is the third year of this projection.
Thank you. So let's stay on the slide just for a moment. So when you look at the, the ribbon, it's tied to the table below the, the colored bars. The yellow is the annual result and the blue is the cumulative fund balance rolling forward over each year. So this again is a baseline projection, assuming no corrective action or changes are taken. So of course, the district will do, do things to address that. As Soraya mentioned, there's, are no further future tax increases after the twenty-three, twenty-four, anything in twenty-three, twenty-four budget, but in the out-years, there, there are no future tax increases. We assume the historical and, and budgeted revenue growth at, at the Commonwealth level for major state subsidies. Not the governor's budget, and we'll come back to that momentarily. And there's also, aside from the assumption of a transfer from fund balance to fund some, some of the large capital, needs that you have no additional borrowing at this point. So it's a little bit of a status quo budget and it gives us sort of a baseline to look at going forward. So what we want to do next is just talk about some of the key things that are driving this and, and things that you would want to watch out for going forward and, and levers you might have to address this trend in the out-years. And I might also just mention that, as we said before, when we've, when we've met, it's not unusual for districts in the Commonwealth to have a picture like this at any given point going forward. The cost of a number of the things that you face, including teacher salaries, health benefits and other, other drivers will tend to grow faster than, than revenues when left, when left on their own. So that there's normally a shortfall in the out-years and the question is, you know, what, what will, what, what steps are, do you have available to, to address it? So a couple of things, just to start with in terms of major factors that might affect this going either way. And you'll see that many of these are the mirror of each other. So state, state or local revenue growth is higher or lower. If inflation is a little higher or lower, you have right now the advantage of having, wrapping up a lot of your wage agreements, but other, other costs that are out in the, that we'll talk about shortly, like transportation fluctuating. We built in, which, we built in a two percent vacancy allowance to assume that on a normal basis, you'll, while you'll have vacant position, you'll have, you'll try to fill all your positions that you're always going to have a certain level of turnover. And if you do more or less than that, of course, it would, it would affect the projections. And then the question which was raised earlier tonight about what ESSER funding, ESSER funding to continue going forward. I, I think the discussion around effectiveness was very important. If you have effective programs that you want to fund, that they make a difference for kids, you'll probably fund those going forward. Others might not be able to be funded depending on, on where you stand and whether they were, in fact, effective. And we'll talk a little bit more about a couple of these. First one, would be transportation. We have a relatively conservative transportation number in here of a growth of about five percent. We've been seeing higher numbers around the Commonwealth. It's, it's, it's pretty uncertain now, hard to tell before you go out for your next transportation contract at the, in about a year from now. So you'll presumably be working over, on it over this school year. Obviously, to, to deal with the kind of cost pressures we've seen across the Commonwealth and frankly nationally on school transportation. We know that you're taking steps to look at your transportation services, look at routing, think about your overall policies. And those will all be important to controlling the, the, the price of transportation for the district. Another area to think about, which has been mentioned a couple of times tonight, is charter school enrollment. What we've done is assume that the, the current base is of about five thousand students. But that's a little bit higher than, than our last projection about a little over a year, almost a year ago. We're assuming that, that the enrollment will grow, will hit fifty-one hundred students next year and then grow by about seventy students annually. Now, obviously, that's, that's subject to what happens with charter caps and approval of new charters or other, other dynamics. The, the, as you know, the charter formula is, is very sensitive to all sorts of things. So the last couple of years, even though charter enrollment was, was rising, the fact that the district could use ESSER funds for a lot of items and generally, a lot of federal funds are not included in the formula meant that the, the rate of charter, charter tuition was not growing quite as fast as the, as the headcount of charter students. So that's obviously now going to reverse. You're going to come back, you're going to replace at least some of your ESSER funding with district funding. It's going to roll into the charter funding, full formula is going to drive up your, your tuition rates going forward. And you've anticipated significant, significant increases in that this coming year in the budget that isn't going to be proposed. And then obviously, as, as mentioned, to the extent that there's approval of, of any changes, that would affect it. I think in that last bullet, the thing that always strikes me is so an additional ninety students is about an additional one point four million dollars. So if you kind of keep in your head a rule of thumb that a million, a, a, a hundred new charter students cost you about a million and a half dollars. That's a good way to kind of think about that and then, and keep in your head. And then obviously, you can offset some of those costs if you were, if your, the rest of your school population were, were declining, but not at the same rate. Obviously, every time a, a child goes to a charter school, you can't close a classroom, so it's not a, a complete trade-off. I, I mentioned that the capital, on the capital side, other than the assumption that a portion of your fund balance would be transferred to capital, we haven't addressed the very significant list of potential projects you have. Depending on where you're going to go, what sort of Commonwealth funding is available. Ultimately, what the Commonwealth decides to do on providing any kind of capital funding in the future, that would, would vary widely. And one of the things we're proposing to do is to come back in the fall. Once you've made some of those decisions, the state budget is settled, your budget is settled, you have your audit and, and revise those. And then as we have several times in the past, we can talk about different capital options and how they would play out for some of the building needs that you have. So at this point, Soraya is going to describe a couple of additional scenarios. Where, where, again, these are provided really for illustrative purposes to give you a sense of, well, what if we, what if we addressed our, our deficit in the next several years by raising taxes? By assuming that the governor's education proposal goes forward or making other changes.
As Dean mentioned, I'll be reviewing two budget scenarios that are looking at what are potential options. If you wanted to look at how the projections could change over time as you're making decisions. We want to highlight that these are not specific recommendations, but they serve as a way to show the financial impact of these alternatives. And the, in the scenarios, I want to highlight as well that there are no raised taxes in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So all tax increases that I show in these two scenarios start twenty-four, twenty-five and then through the rest of the projection. In the first scenario, we're looking at the baseline state subsidy, so what we talked about before with the historical one hundred and eighty increase to BF in the thirty-five to SEF and no other increases based on the governor's current twenty-three, twenty-four proposal. But we are looking at increasing the real estate tax to the Act One index beginning in twenty-four, twenty-five. And that's the only projection in that first scenario. In the second scenario, we continue to, we lower the real estate tax. We're not hitting the tax one index in every year, but instead we're doing around six percent at five point eight-three. And we're also looking at the governor's current proposed twenty-three, twenty-four budget. In the current proposed budget, we're seeing a twenty-five million level up funding that's moved to the base allocation in twenty-three, twenty-four. And as I've mentioned before, no other level up money is being moved, added in the other years. We're seeing five hundred and sixty-seven million allocated to the BEF formula, which is about one point three times the amount the district is assuming in its current twenty-three, twenty-four budget, the proposed budget. And we're also seeing an increase to SEF by ninety-seven million dollars, which is triple the baseline estimate. And the following, in the scenario, despite the increases that we're looking at in the governor's proposed twenty-three, twenty-four budget, we go back to the historical trends for twenty-four, twenty-five and the years after that. So as I said, in this first scenario, we're looking at the Act One and raising real estate taxes to the Act One index. You'll see in that first column on the table below that we're listing out the school years where we're seeing these increases. And then the estimated Act One index in that middle column, so growing from about seven point seven percent in twenty-four, twenty-five to six point two in the final year of the projections. That's an average of about six point six percent throughout the five years. In that last column, you see the cumulative revenue impact dollar amount based on these tax increases. It's grown from about nine million dollars in twenty-four, twenty-five to approximately forty-eight in the final year of the projections. You'll see below, we'll have, we have a similar ribbon that we showed before. And we have the table in the bottom. You'll see there's a significant difference to the previous updated baseline projections that we see, we shown. So you'll notice that the district is seeing a surplus in the years from twenty-three, twenty-four, well, to zero in twenty-three, twenty-four is balanced, but you're seeing a, an annual surplus until twenty-six, twenty-seven. And then you'll see a negative operating, operating result in the last two years, but it's very small compared to what we noticed before. And it's a smaller amount compared to the district's total expenditures in those years. And they're able to be absorbed by the district's continued fund balance in all the years throughout this projection. Despite the results that we're seeing in this table, we wanted to highlight that this would be at a great tax burden to the taxpayers going to the Act One index in every year, although we see that it would have a positive result in the coming years for the district. These, in the next scenario, we're looking at the governor's proposal for BF and SEF. We wanted to highlight this specific area because as you noted in the earlier, when we looked at the key drivers for the district's revenues, state subsidies while state education accounted for nearly fifty percent of the district's revenue budget. So changes to, when, where it's, if it's decreasing or increasing, changes to the state subsidies, changes to the state education fund would greatly impact the district's projections. And this table, similarly to the one before, we're looking at a five point eight-three percent increase or around six percent in every year, starting in twenty-four, twenty-five. And again, we're assuming that the governor's proposed budget for BF and SEF is passed in twenty-three, twenty-four. And then you return to the historical amounts at twenty-four, twenty-five in the years after. And the cumulative impact of that is about seven point eight, the cumulative impact of the tax increases is about seven million in twenty-four, twenty-five to about thirty-seven point three in the final year. As you can see in this scenario, the district's has an operating result that is a surplus in every year of the projected, projections. You also see that your fund balance, that blue bar in the middle in the ribbon continues to grow in the out-years.
So I just want to comment on the, on both of those ribbons for, for a moment. So obviously, what, what this is showing is that if, if the historical and kind of budgeted assumptions around state revenues were to, were to happen, an Act One, an annual increases to the Act One index would keep the budget relatively balanced over the next five years. And similarly, if the governor's budget passes, it would be, it would be, it would reduce those amounts. But in both cases, still, we're talking about really, really significant annual property tax increases. It's obviously not something that the board of the public would endorse. And it gives us a sense of a couple of things. We need to think about other things we can do to, to manage both revenues and expenditures. And also, as the, as the discussion goes forward around the fair funding formula, there obviously is some upside there potentially. However, our, our working assumption right now is, given what, what's been said since the decision earlier this year, that it will take some time for that to work through, that we wouldn't necessarily see cash for some time. And it sounds like there's at least some early discussion about this not being just necessarily lump sum through the formulas, but perhaps earmarked for things like capital or special needs or different kinds of programs within the districts. So, so exactly how it would be applied to each district might be a little bit different. The other thing we would note is that in the last couple of years, we've seen, because of the pandemic, actually, in, in a lot of cases in places in Pennsylvania, some of the things that have happened in terms of providing pandemic aid, even the, you know, the two thousand dollar checks, the fact that people were able to keep Medicaid without reapplying and other things have actually raised people's standard of living. And so in Allentown's case, the median household income numbers have been increasing. And it's actually reducing some of your, you know, reducing the, the growth in subsidy that you would have had otherwise. So the good news is you're becoming less poor, but it also means it'll affect that. And that's going to, that's going to change, just like we talked about around the end of the ESSER, the end of the ESSER funding. So over the next couple of years, the Finance Office and, and Pazvo and others will have to take a, you know, really monitor that and look at how your local conditions might affect the, the distribution of funds through the formula. So tricky things to, to keep all of our eyes on. I can't think of a couple of those in there. But the key thing is that we think that the district's in a stable position for the rest of this year and next year because of the continuation of the ESSER funds, the steps that you've already taken to stay in balance. But obviously, as this changes, we'll have to keep a, a close eye on things. We think that one, one major issue, since we have not shown any additional debt service costs in the, in the projections, is getting at least a head start on some of your capital needs with a transfer from the, from the, from the fund balance. And I think in particular, because that's one-time money. And it's very good to match that and best practice to match that up with one-time spending and generational spending in your, your businesses. And, I'm sorry, in your buildings. And, and then at the same time, kind of keeping an eye on the, the long-term structural challenges in the budget that we, that we described. So a couple of areas to really focus on, really the things that we described. So a couple of areas to really focus on, really the things that are able to save you a lot of money or will cost you a lot of money. So obviously, your own virtual academy, your own ability to provide cyber school education to your students is a key factor in, in being, staying in competition with your charter schools and making sure that you're able to, to compete and, and maintain and control the level of growth in that funding, which is, it can be very volatile for you. Making sure that as you go through the SIR transition and you remove grant funded programs, that you are either finding a new source of funding for the ones you want to keep or making sure that you eliminate the ones that are not working as well. To think about a lot about what, as you, as you look at your vacancies and filling your positions going forward, obviously, it's a tough time for hiring and maintaining teachers, but to the extent that you are thinking strategically about your vacant positions and making sure that you're you're using all of your, your positions widely wisely and dedicating state and local funding to, to help you sustain your budget going forward. And then I mentioned already the, the down payment on, on facilities needs. A couple of final comments. When we come back later in the year, we look at the actual staffing and programs that you end up choosing in the budget and some of the things that you discussed tonight as priorities. Making sure those are funded and that they're, they're covered. That's always a tricky area for us is making sure that we have the academic priorities you want reflected in the budget and that they're costed out. And make sure that we, we've incorporated the year end audit and particularly in this case, where as every year, we're a little uncertain about where the state budget will end up. And of course, your budget will react to that. And then finally, once we, you have more clarity around capital programming and what you expect to do and spend and when we can mesh that with the, the transfer from fund balance as well as a future borrowing or other sources of funding. So that's, that's our presentation. We're happy to discuss any of those points. Thank you.
Next item is our budget presentation by Mr. Linderman. And this will be an action item.
Yes, it's, it's finally after months, you guys can go. I'm going to fly through this. You did most of it anyway, and everybody's. So thank you. And while, while we're getting the budget presentation up there, we'll talk to this presentation tonight. And again, I will fly through it. It's not much, it has not changed very much at all since last time, a couple of little things we did and I'll try and highlight them when we get there and we'll let Dr. Burks go over the first couple of slides here.
Good evening again. So Mr. Lyndon and I are going to present our proposed final budget. As he mentioned, we were dating you a little bit before recording. Now we're at the ready to go. Okay. So as you know, as we always start off that who we are as an organization and our mission and vision and all decisions that we're making as it relates to our funding will focus on the mission, vision, the core values of our organization and service to our students, families and the educators and everyone who serves them. For our students, we have approximately 16,199 precious jewels, as people quote me so well, who are we are serving. We also have approximately 2,100 or so staff members. We've given you the student and the staff demographic makeup. We had a budget process. We shared it with the board earlier on, starting in January. And we gave you the timeline and segments. And last week, as I mentioned, we had our budget forum. We said that we were going to present to the public and we did. And that was on May 3rd. Tonight, we are presenting our preliminary budget to the board for its consideration. And we will present the final budget for the board's final adoption on June 22nd. We will also post our budget on our district's website so that the public will have an opportunity, 30 days to review our, the budget and provide input. And after March 22nd, we'll be presenting to the state for approval.
It's okay. I'm not going to go too, too much into detail on the revenue. I will tell you the, the, the major change in the revenue is we got our, our allocation for title one for next year and it's, it's up under 100,000, but it, it was not insignificant, but it was not, I would call significant. So that's why you see about $100,000 difference in the budget between last, last month and this month. And again, as, as our colleagues who went ahead of us, you see most of our money comes from the state. And if you factor in the federal, that's a pretty big chunk of your money. It's pretty darn close to three quarters of your money. And I know we talk about tax increases, but I have to tell you, when most of your monies come from the state, you rely on the state sources. Your tax increase, you know, whatever it is, 5%, 2% is based on basically about $100 million of that, your property tax. So it's not based on when you say you're going to increase taxes 6%, it's not an increase in taxes on a base of $400 million, where you're going to get $24 million, 6%. It's just $6 million, which is not a very big total percentage of your budget. So that's why you have to look at, at all the sources. Again, here's our expenditures and we, we were through these before. We just added some, some numbers in there for the, to coincide with the, the title one numbers. If we do get the title two, title three and title four, we'll, we'll adjust. They won't be as big of an adjustment as the title one numbers, but we will make the adjustment to properly show. And Dean went over these prior, so I'm not going to belabor these. I'm going to get down there. We talked about the tuition rates. You can see our tuition rates starting to pop up a little bit. Did go down during COVID. Quite frankly, because you had such a large amount of, of SIR money in addition, that was kind of offsetting a lot of your, your local money and your state money, which would have gotten factored into the formula. So you're going to start to see some bigger increases. My guess is it will go up even higher because there will be no SIR money in the 2425 budget. There'll be some SIR money. It'll be like a million dollars. That's so. So you don't have a ton of SIR money as opposed to the, to the 40 million we have in this year or in next year's budget. Slide hasn't changed. We kept it the same. Again, you know, we're, we're, we're projecting for charter schools to be about $70 million, a little over 70 million, which is over a 10% increase on the current year. And we factored in, you have some busing costs for charter schools of about 6 million. So when you, when you compare that total cost of about 76 million to, to what you, your, your property tax bills are, which is about 97, 98 million. It's about 77% of your, of every tax bill goes to pay charter school costs. And again, this is what has happened over the years as, as far as the total cost of your charter schools as compared to your, your property tax levy. We are working on some things, some of the cost drivers. We talked, mentioned briefly, some of the transportation things we're, we're looking about at taking our, our bus routes back and having our, our own transportation director be in charge of, of scheduling the routes and, and, and the students. We're looking to transport early intervention students in the, in the summer and then next year because they, currently the IU does it. And quite frankly, it costs us about twice as much as what we think we can do it for ourselves. And then some of the things I'm not going to go into too much detail on it because we've talked about it the past couple of months is, you know, one of the things we heard loud at the budget meetings over the year was the, the, the attendance issues you have. And possibly the reason that some of your charter school students are going to charter schools is to get a bus ride. So if we look at a lesser walk for Allentown students, we may spend a little more money in transportation, but hopefully spend a little less in charter school cost. Also, we were, we, we found out that most of your middle school and high school students that go to your Allentown schools use Lanta or Walk. And we can offer that the same service to the charter schools. There's no reason to provide them with a, a private bus right to the school. They ought to be able to use Lanta too. So we're working on that as an option. And, and Lanta, which is a fair-based system is actually, has a better reimbursement from the state. Almost 100%, we would get back from whatever we spend on the Lanta, the extra money we would spend to Lanta. So basically, we're, we're, we're not penalizing them. We just want this same busing service for everybody. You know, so if you're riding, if you have to ride a Lanta bus and you're an eighth grader, whether you're going to, you know, Trexler or, or one of your other middle schools, you're going to ride that same, same type of bus to, to one of the charter schools. Okay. Again, we still have zero millage, 0% millage increase right now. I think you heard Dean talk a little bit about, you know, depending on what happens with the, if you do decide to increase the caps, that could change. Because we are, we are kind of right on the budget that is balanced. So and this is just a little chart, shows the history of your millage rates. Act one index for Allentown and, and we like to show the social security increase. And this year, social security increase was, was especially high for, for those. I'm going to let Dr. Burks talk about these, what's included in the budget.
So as I mentioned, in the way we will allocate our resources based on our mission and vision. And these are many of the efforts that we will focus this year. Expansion of our arts program, we intend to hire additional teachers so we can have a comprehensive arts program, pre-K to 12. Or if we're going to span our curriculum as well as the materials that we are providing in support of reading and mathematics. A focus on early learning, as I mentioned previously, the district does not have a comprehensive early learning program. So we are going to enlist the support of our partners as well as use some of our resources to add pre-K seats and expansion of early learning at scale. We will do an intensive investment in, as I mentioned, curriculum for our core content areas. We, we know that the SRS funding is going to sunset at the end of the 20, or the beginning of the 2425 year, school year or fiscal year. And so we will spend a lot of time this year ensuring that we exhaust and maximize our efforts so that we can get all our students what they need and their families to support them. We are going to develop a long-term capital plan so that we're being thoughtful about how we improve our facilities. We have a focus on early college awareness, so that conversation was raised extensively. And so, and we will, and we have started talking with our other partners as well as we will be more intentional. I've had some initial conversations with LTRIC and expanding our work there. And we're going to organize the district into network improvement communities using a portfolio strategy. And I will bring a little bit more of the theory and practice to the school board of directors and the community about what that would look like in practice. Next steps, as we mentioned earlier in this budget process, we will create a budget book. It should, we want to ensure that you pass the budget first before you give you, give you the budget book. But we are in the process and we have a team working on that currently, which we will be transparent. I know we like that word in this community about how each school is funded and department, down to the number of positions within each school and department and resources that we're spending across the district. Tonight, we're presenting, well, tonight we're presenting our preliminary budget for the board's consideration for May 25th. We will post, once the board takes action on the 25th, we will post it on our website for public inspection. And the budget will appear there for 30 days. And then we, the final budget will be adopted. If the board does this on June 22nd. Thank you.
Okay. So, so you, 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 this will be an action item. Just for consideration there, the, the tax mileage is zero. The state subsidy increase, we have about 6% in there. State special ed is about 2%. Flat funding for the federal grants, except for title one, that's up a little bit right now because we do have it. We've not changed the charter school caps. So, you know, again, if that changes that, then we will have to make an adjustment. And we're assuming that the average daily membership and tuition rate stay the same. And, and we factor in some of the savings that we did from your, the most recent contract you, you just approved tonight. So these are the, the items for your consideration.
Mr. Linderman, before we move on to the remaining items, I'd like to pause and see if there's any.
No, 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 I'm, I'm pausing.
Okay, good. I didn't know. I saw you put in the page. I wanted to make sure.
I was just making sure I didn't have another slide past that because I know this clicker takes.
We didn't have a preliminary conversation, so I wanted to make sure we were on the same page.
No, you're good. Here, I'm, we're, we're ready to field questions, although you, you've heard kind of two pretty similar presentations back to back. Dean's was a little more kind of long-term and things like that, which is, which is great. And so here we are.
Any questions from my colleagues for Mr. Linderman or Dr. Burks? Okay. Well, then seeing no questions, I will entertain a motion to move this forward to the Thursday May 25th meeting. I make a motion. Thank you, Ms. Harris. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Santana. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you. Majority is an aye, so this moves forward to the Thursday, May 25th meeting. If, I would like to ask my colleagues prior to moving on to the next item, would it be all right with all of you if we allowed Mr. Linderman to present the remaining items and vote for them? We could vote for them one by one at the end, or we could vote for them?
I was, I'm, I'm all for, just let me rip through the description and you say yea or nay at the end for all of them.
That, that, that was my.
Some of them are, well, let me, I'll tell you some, some of them.
Well, reviewing some of them, there's a lot of renewals on here. Unless there's any opposition from any of my colleagues, we'll move forward in that manner. Okay.
Okay. So the first item is, is the request to engage Eisner Ampere to perform an audit of the Allentown School District. This would be, this was done at the, we, at the request of the Allentown School Board to task out and we, we, we did that. Actually, Mr. Fazio did this, this part for us. Reached out to three auditing firms to perform a forensic audit, got back responses from two of the three, one declined, I believe. And so we were recommending Eisner Ampere at a cost of between 25 and 35,000, not to exceed 35,000 for phase one and phase two and three will be, if required, will be determined at a later date. Questions?
This is for, from what period of time? Let's be clear.
This is for a period of time to be determined by the auditors. They This is for a period of time to be determined by the auditors. They will be looking back. They, I believe we told you uh, a while ago, that it's mo- every auditor we talked to said it's kind of unrealistic to do the thirty year audit as you suggested. Uh, but they will go back and as, as they find things, they will go back further. If they don't find anything, they will stop and report back to you. Uh, and that's what phase one does. They go through all, all item, all aspects of the of the financial and operations. You know, it's not just, it's not just cash, it's, it's how you operate, it's policies and procedures. Uh, so they will do all of that.
But there was no phase one, it does not cover a period of time.
I thought it was seven years.
Seven years.
Seven years.
Yeah, that's what I was waiting to hear.
We, okay.
Years, but maybe more.
Seven years, but more if they can. And again, as I think we um documented to you that uh much more than seven years, we don't have to keep schools and entities don't have to keep a lot of information that are, that is that old. Uh, there's certain data you keep forever, financial reports, things like that, but you know, things like actual copies of invoices and stuff like that generally get uh, you know, destroyed, or if you don't have a, a, an electronic archive system, which you do not. Um, they, they get, uh, have to be destroyed if they're, because you just physically don't have room to maintain that kind of stuff. So the next thing on there is uh went back on. Uh, no, the next thing on the agenda was K twelve insight, let's talk contract. Who uses that? Is it, anyway, it's, it's a, it's a software service uh. Um.
Yes, Miss Reese is coming.
Oh.
Yes.
Very quick.
Yes, very quick. Thank you. For those of you not familiar with K twelve insight and let's talk, it is a two way communication platform that we have had. Uh, I believe since twenty eighteen or nineteen, um, it allows um any constituent to go onto our website through a little pop up box. They can ask questions directly of the district and they go to the correct staff member, so it's funneled by department or by building. Um, I have oversight, so a lot of it also does come through me. Um, we have had over five thousand inquiries since its implementation. It was really heavily used during the pandemic. Um, and we are exploring ways within our contracts to also um expand the use to an AI chatbot. So if a family asks, and I feel bad using this example after tonight. If a family were to ask, does my child need a uniform? We could have a pre populated answer, so I may have to go back and change that answer. Um, we're also exploring the use of uh, they provide customer service training to anyone who uses the platform, but also not necessarily anyone who uses the platform, but someone who is customer service facing. So maybe some of our main office secretaries would get some customer service training through this contract, but let's talk.
Have a comment question. Um, so this is funded through Esters?
Mm hmm.
So what's the?
Ac- actually, no, I think that's supposed to be title.
It says Esters.
Yeah, I'm looking at that. It, um, it had, I believe, the first year of Esters funding, we funded it through Esters, and then last year we switched it to title, um, but I can check back with Miss Yona. Apologies.
Okay, well, that was my question. What happens next year?
Mission.
This is a title. Can you stand up and move them up here and talk?
I want to go back to records to see how the communication I had in the lab here about the funding of this, because we are very specifically getting approvals for, for you, uh, this is specific funding sources for I ones, so I will go back. Um, and we get back to that diverse, so it's in here someday.
Okay, thank you. My other question is, um you said there have been over five thousand inquiries since twenty eighteen? Uh, I mean, I don't, I don't know anything about this in detail, but it seems like a low number to me.
So I will say, um, when we initially launched it, we did not use it very much. It was a very slow launch. Um, and then the pandemic hit, and that was one of the the few ways that our families knew they could get in touch with us and get an answer because we weren't in our buildings to answer the phone. Um, so we promoted a lot of our COVID communication with if you need to reach your building or you need to reach someone in your school, please use let's talk because our staff was manning that system. Um, it has dropped off a little bit in the last year just because of some staff turnover, and I'm really excited. Um, I presented with Dr. Burks, if a plan to get more staff in there, get the right staff in there based on department, and then, like I said, use that customer service training to make sure that we're providing our families with high levels of customer service when they have questions.
Okay, so because the, the comment that I was going to make was, or is, I don't know if it is funded through Esters. My comment was going to be, if it's not really being used um as much, and if it's dropping off, then could we use those funds for something else for our students?
To answer your question, of course, we can use funds for anything else we want to. That's a direct question. But we want to use this platform as a way of two way communication for our families so that we are in better service to them. And so in, in full transparency, as a district, we have not used, promoted this program at scale. So people aren't utilizing it because they don't know about it. So many of the people who are writing now, they they've been in the district for a while and they have used it. So it's kind of this repeat people who use this as a platform. But we want that direct communication. You know, there's so much research that, that supports communicating with families and such, and I want to get into, you know, I get all excited when I talk about research, but we just have to do a better job of promoting it. And if we once the Esther uh funds expires and Miss uh Smith is our czar on title at this point. However, I can't see why this would not be an allowable Title One expense as an effort of family and community engagement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on, um student accident insurance, um, uh, that's the, the mainly the insurance for our student athletes and, and things like that. Um, it's two hundred thirty six thousand eight hundred seventy one dollars. It's in the general fund. It is no increase over the prior year. Uh. Our annual property casualty insurance renewal is um, is listed there and uh, our general liability did go up uh almost fifty thousand dollars. Uh, mainly, mainly because of the uh, they, they reappraise all of our buildings, so our buildings are valued a little bit higher. Um, and some of the others are, are about even or a little bit higher. The boiler is up about fifty nine hundred dollars. The violent malicious acts are, are also up about four thousand dollars. And uh so the total cost for our property casualty insurance for all the lines of uh of businesses, uh, six hundred fifty thousand, seven hundred and four dollars. And then the workers' compensation renewal is renewing at one point two million dollars. That's actually a uh, a decrease from last year's premium, which was a million four hundred fifty thousand dollars. So it's about a two hundred fifty thousand dollar uh, decrease. And um so and there's a, the, another item here is the last or yeah, second to the last item, the, the last item that's a voting item is um approval of the uh, uh, the one year substitute custodial custodial services agreement for advanced cleaning uh at a cost of uh just under eight hundred thousand dollars. The last thing I'll just kind of have you look at, if you, if you have it in your packet, is a couple sample possible changes to your board reports, which personally, as a new guy coming in from the outside are just awful hard to read and don't know how anybody could even understand them when you look at them. And I'm a numbers guy, so these samples here come off of a system we have called Forecast Five. Kind of has like, so people that like bar charts, there's bar charts, people that like numbers, like me, there's still numbers. So you can look at the bars and forget about the numbers, or you can look at the numbers and forget about the bars. So that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Linderman. Does anyone have any questions on any of the items that we've just given you?
Um, yes.
Go ahead.
It's quick. Um, on the workers' comp- workman's compens- workers' compensation, um, why was there such a decrease?
I, I, our, our rating went down, our, our, our um factor we've had, had, they, they, we, uh, kept the, the experience modifier that we have dropped. So uh that's, that's kind of the key. That's the big number, like when Dean was here and talking about the numbers for the thing. The one multiplier, if your experience modifier is, is over one, it's bad. If you're at point something. Ours is still over one, but we were way over one before one point oh. We were way over that. So that's.
You seem kind of.
Oh, um, yeah, I did have a question, but I, I think Miss Will already answered it. I had a question on the cleaning services. Um, we, we have a shortage, is that correct, on custodian?
Yes.
Yes.
They're currently here now. I mean, they're doing stuff, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so and they're, without them, they, a lot of schools would go unclean.
I'm personally trying to make it possible that we hire everybody. I've already said, but three. They're, they're going to, you know, so I, I'm proposing my own job fair. Just to let y'all know. For support staff, because they're out there, they want, they want the jobs. Um, they just don't know they can get the job without. So, like I said, I'm doing a job there. I don't know when we doing it, but I'm doing one.
Any other questions or, uh, Ms. Conover, is that your hand up?
Yes, it's my hand. I, I just want to speak to the um to the, the audit. Um, because I don't want to just run over it because, again, I was one of the board members as well as community member that was asking for that thirty year audit. And I need you guys to correct me if I'm wrong. That audit is an audit that the board um, that the admin actually presented to the board. Um, that stating that it only covers seven years and it'll go into like phases if they, if you do something. If you look and you don't find anything, you won't go any further. If you, if you find something, then you go a little further. I just want to make sure if that's what.
They're, they're, they will come, they will do their audit. They will come to you with a report. It will be your decision as to whether you go to phase two or three. It's not my decision or the new business manager's decision or, or Dr. Burks's decision. They will, they will give you a report on what they find, and depending on what you see or what you don't see, you'll, you'll either give them the go ahead for phase two. Uh, or you will say thank you very much and, and move on and make whatever adjustments you need to make based on what they've given you at that point.
Now, can this board or Dr. Burks, can you explain to myself again publicly, because I'm not in agreement with the seven. I feel like I'm, it's kind of like being you know, this is take this or leave it. Because seven years pretty much only covers the timeframe that myself, Mrs. Harris and um, you know, the current board um, has been here. It's not going to cover. We came in two thousand seventeen. So can you tell me how we went from thirty to seven?
Well, if you recall, they did interview all of you uh to find out the, the specific rationale for the, the thirty year audit. And normally, if you're going for a, for a forensic audit like this, normally there's some kind of smoking gun or some kind of fire behind the wall that somebody knows about, and that was not determined by any of you to these auditors. So they are quite frankly doing an audit on this, you know, kind of, they're coming in, they're going to look at everything, uh, but, but they're not specifically, I think, uh even Mr. Fazio told you, he went into a school district as an interim and they had a forensic audit, but they had a specific reason for the audit. And they, they expanded past that specific reason, but they focused on the reason and they can dig back as far as you can go with records on that, that reason then too. Uh, but again, um, this was based on the interviews uh, that the, the auditors did with the board members, you know, back before Christmas, uh, and uh, you know, where you worked through this to try and get them. Uh, uh, one did not want to even bid on it. Uh, another told us, told us it was a uh, you know, to do the, do what was being asked with a thirty year audit was a waste of time and money because you, you did not really give them a direction to, to do that. So uh they are going to come in, phase one, this Eisner Ampere, who is pretty good, they're out Philly, they will come in and do a, a, um uh, an overview and, and they'll meet with you guys, they'll meet with uh everybody here in the central office and they'll do whatever they need.
Sorry about that. I do have a dog. Go ahead.
That was the best comment I could.
We don't have, we don't have the data.
Can your head's up to say?
Yeah, and, and again, when they're looking at financial records, there's not a lot of financial records, other than very summary uh, annual financial reports and budgets uh that go back past seven years. Your, the records retention policies of most schools do not require you to keep.
Most industries.
And most industries do not require you to keep uh, a, you know, your, your petty cash reconciliation from nineteen fifty two.
So I, I, so this is the other question, because I don't know that we were just looking for petty cash. Well, because I, I don't, I had talked about contracts, but I just wanted to, to be clear. Um, because it just said in that list that you provided was the audit, and I just wanted to be able to revisit the timeframe. I was one of the board members that asked for thirty years. And this is covering seven in, in actuality, um in my opinion, whatever has happened that I'm, I guess I will be looking for or be concerned with fraudulent or whatever the case may be, I'm just saying, would have happened prior to me being on the board. So I would think that this money that we're spending would pretty much be a waste. I'm going to agree with you. I would rather be ten. You know, three years before we got on there because we knew that, you know, it was kind of crazy then. Um but you know, we came in at, at, at two thousand seventeen, business office was, was a, was a disarray, and I wanted to know how it got to that point. So it had to go more years beyond, you know, our tenure.
So the administration is requesting respectfully that when we start the process that the vendor provides the board with the material, with the information that's been requested, and the board would like to direct the administration to have the vendor go beyond. Administration will file, follow the guidance of the board in according and move accordingly. But I, I think that um based on where we were before that this is a step to be more that we're transparent, I'm using it, transparent with the public and to the board to start this process of showing that we're not administration, this administration is not hiding anything. That we want to be, it helps me, hey, this is great, because then I don't have to be uh, um, subject to whether in my administration, if something illegal was happening, funds weren't spent a certain way, we'll have it out in the public as to where we stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, I just want to reiterate, Dr. Burks, um, and to other folks that are here, again. You know, if this board doesn't want to move forward having an audit, my concern is with what happened long before you got here. You know, and, and you are here and quite if there was something that, that has not been addressed or has not been founded comes up later on, many of us may be wishing we had this audit. Um, because, like I said, there's, I, I know I'm not, I'm not crazy. Um, but if this is the best that this board can do, then that, the other part of this board will vote um, in favor for having it, but I'm not, seven years is just, again, you're just going through the motions. You know, it means nothing.
Thank you, Ms. Conover. If there's no other comments, I will entertain a motion to move items three, four, five, six, seven, and eight to the regular board meeting on Thursday, May twenty fifth. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Santana. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oppose.
Okay, the majority of the, the ayes have it, so this, those agenda items move forward to the regular board meeting on May twenty fifth. Madam Secretary, any public comment on non agenda items? I have to ask.
I'll repeat, there's no public here and no public.
Okay. Any old business? Any new business? Motion to adjourn.